Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November 8th. This meeting is being recorded by WCTV and by Jamie Wickston. Would we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Tonight, we're going to take one agenda item off, number five, the bus driver contract. We have to meet an executive session next week, and we will do that on the 17th. So we will have a vote on that on a meeting a week from Thursday. At this time, I also, we don't have good news on the agenda, but we were just talking upfront in that my election poll, I saw several Wareham high school students working at the polls today as part of their community service. They were very helpful. They were well received by the public and the other poll volunteers who were working there. So it was very nice to see the Wareham kids involved in that civic obligation. And at this time, we're going to have our annual school improvement plan and district action plan presentation. The various schools and Dr. Schwalm will present, and then the school committee will have a chance to ask questions at the end of the presentation. So thank you very much.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I want to first start out by saying thank you to everyone who worked to put this presentation together, the school principals, their staffs, Dr. Schwalm, all the work that she's done, and the central office staff that contributed and worked to put this together. Thank you very much. The strategic plan, as you know, was developed and adopted back in June of 2021 by the school committee. And the plan this evening would be to review last year's priorities and establish new ones for this coming or this current school year. The presentation will begin with the district priorities, and then we'll go into each of the schools. The presentation addresses, or the plan addresses, a wide array of needs of our students, including things such as curriculum development, core classes, extra learning opportunities, student mental and emotional help, career opportunities, and professional development and literacy. With that being said, we'll start off with defining our why.
So we began our building of this plan by talking about the book Man's Search for Meaning by Viktor Frankl. And when we did the presentation about the strategic plan, we talked about how important it was to help our students discover their why. Because as Viktor Frankl states, "He who has a why to live for can endure anyhow." So part of our responsibility, obviously, is to have our students engaged in something they care about, and that means something to them. No. Back, yes. So in all of the workshops that I've attended since that time, many have asked us why we do the work that we do and what drives us to do that work. And we, one of my last workshops was a story of why, right? Write your story of why. And so I would like to just challenge the committee and everyone in the audience to think about why you're engaged in this work. Why does it matter to you? And why have you made this a priority? As you have, because those are really good questions as we move ahead.
A major piece of the strategic plan, of course, is the vision that was developed when the plan was originally developed. And coming in as a new superintendent, I wanted to work with the administrative team to make sure that we had the expectations for each other and the expectations for our staff that would drive us toward the vision for the district. So one of the first things we did is we developed core values as a team. And we went through a process or an activity together to talk about different values that we bring to work and values that we would and do expect from each other and our staff and our students every day. And the four core values that we settled on are relationships, perseverance, respect, and compassion. Now, along with that, we developed a mission statement. And the way that, the way that I described it, because I've looked at vision and mission statements and definitions of them from many different sources, and you can find different definitions. The way I look at it is the vision is what is the ultimate end or the ultimate goal that you have for the school district? And the mission is what are you going to do every single day? What are you going to bring every single day to work to make sure you get to that vision? And so the mission really talks about what we're going to do every single day, provide safe learning environment, dedicated to communicating effectively with compassion, compassionate and honest conversations, to encourage and model respectful relationships and inclusive learning opportunities, and to foster learning that challenges everyone to be their best selves. And there's the vision. That's the vision that was developed by the team, the strategic plan team, back a couple of years ago. And it's very, it's very appropriate and very good vision for our district.
And this you've seen, we sort of designed it a little bit differently, but it's basically our learning model and our priorities. Student learning is the number one priority. We're a school, so we hope that that always remains our priority. Social-emotional learning is extremely important to not only our staff, but our students. Community, college, career, and life-inspired professional learning, and then digital convergence. And digital convergence is not as complicated as it sounds, but it's a way in which we can become more efficient with time and with money. So we are working diligently to converge digitally in the best way possible. And it's been a very interesting process. We're getting there slowly but surely. And these are our promises. So our promise, and I'm not going to read them to you. You have the link to it. But we're basically promising these things, which means that over the period, by the time we reach 2026, we hope to have created this, these opportunities here. So the district priorities of last year for district scholarship student learning were to look at professional development, assist our students with voice, engagement, rigor, help them value learning, think critically, and talk about our teachers and their perceptions of student performance, and provide continuous feedback and support through the evaluation system to teachers. We measured this with PD offered and attended evaluation forms, formative and summative assessments, and performance-based assessments. You'll see as the schools present, and also with the MCIA-published performance-based assessments and the task bank, that many of our teachers did submit publishable performance-based assessment tasks, which was very exciting for me. So it was a happy day when we became published, because there are many of them on there, which is great. So, and Matt's going to talk about the future.
Okay, so looking at the priorities for this school year, and again, coming in as a new superintendent, we developed my goals that the school committee voted on a couple of meetings ago. And this first priority, facilitate discussion at administrative level about steps to refocus efforts on reading, writing, and speaking. That ties into my goal where I'm going to be looking at curriculum and looking at programs and teaching strategies that we have implemented in the district. It's always productive to review what we're teaching, how we're teaching it, what literacy resources that we're using. So this is an important piece. Out of this work, we can develop goals going forward that will address where our learning needs might be and what process we'll use. Also included in this is developing personalized learning plans, which are specific to standards that students may be struggling in and instructional strategies to address them. Performance-based assessments, again, giving students a number of different ways to exhibit what they've learned. And finally, the evaluation subcommittee, this is something that we're required by contract, but also because DESI is revising the rubric. So that's an important piece of the work that we're going to be doing this year.
So we've been busy social, with the social-emotional learning. Overall, the district has been. We developed a committee, a social-emotional learning committee. That committee will continue through this year as well. And it's funded through Title II, Title I, and some Title IV resources, which is very nice that it's supported that way. We look at all of the different CASL elements, which is a great program that helps us to sort of establish how we measure social-emotional intelligence and need. And as a result, you'll hear more about this through the Wareham Elementary School, because Bethany Chandler just received her doctorate, and it was focused highly on social-emotional learning, which was really exciting. But, and part of that was also developing standards which the state doesn't isolate. They embed them into the core curriculum. And I always think it's necessary to identify by developmental age where students should demonstrate some level of social-emotional intelligence through their careers. So that was created as well. But we have some other plans also in place. We use the SQM, and I know that's a complicated measure for everyone. It's vetted, university-created measure. And so we're looking at that and talking about that and looking for other ways that we can also measure that might be more easily communicated as we then continue to grow in that direction.
So the emotional well-being of our students is extremely important. If students come to school and they're feeling good emotionally and feeling supported, they are, they're ready to learn, and we are, we have more success in the academic part of school. SEL, when I think of SEL, I think of student self-awareness, their self-control, and their interpersonal skills. So some of the areas that we will focus on this year is, one, professional development for our staff. This is something the staff has expressed they would like some additional training in. An important piece of the emotional well-being of our students is school climate. And that's one way we can gauge how they are feeling, how comfortable they are when they are here in school. There's a tool that we can use. It's called VOCAL, Views of Climate and Learning. It is a school climate survey that the Department of Ed will administer as part of MCAS if you request to have it done. We are doing it, I believe, in grades four and five currently. You can do it in grades four, five, eight, and 10. So I would like to extend that, get that information, and it will give us a good breakdown of how our students are feeling when they're in school. I would also, as part of this, look at an assessment for our students' social and emotional competencies. There are many different tools out there. One that I'm familiar with is called CELIS. And it's really a self-assessment. And you can see how a student feels about him or herself and their ability for self-awareness, self-management, their social awareness, relationship skills, thank you, and responsible decision-making. So all of these pieces, by administering this self-assessment, we can get an idea of where our students are doing well and what areas they might need support. And finally, we, we're going to look at some SEL curriculum. There's a number of different curriculums out there that support this area. Some of them are great, others are not. So we'll do some good research on those and see which ones are best, and perhaps, perhaps adopt one. There's a number of different factors that we would have to look at before we did that. But that's going to be a piece of our work this year.
I also want to mention that Harriet Sullivan also did her research and her dissertation on social-emotional intelligence at the middle school level. So we have two new doctors in the house, which is awesome. I think, also, Nicole Wade did her research on social-emotional learning. And so there seems to be a number of people who are digging deep and trying to figure out how they can help their students. I didn't want to miss them in this discussion, so. Our district, community, college, and career. This is kind, this is rather exciting. So we were able to formulate a committee, again, using Title II and IV funds at the high school, that started to explore what it is that we offer and, and create possible pathways that we could explore that are also consistent with high-level learning expectations. So what I want to do, or my, the desire I have is to have students be able to leave high school with a skill that they could go to work, but with also the level of rigor necessary to attend college if they choose. If they choose to go to work and then go to college, they can do that. If they need to learn how to develop a patent and submit that, or a business plan, and they want to franchise, whatever in the universe they want to do, I think we need to afford them that opportunity and not limit them through career pathways. So this group, if you click the link, I won't do that now, but they've established four possible pathways, one of which is vetted out nicely and will be presented as a, as a possible approval from the school committee during the course selection, the high school course catalog presentation. So the committee members will come and present the pathway that they've vetted the most and are continuing to work this year to do more work in that area. So we've gotten a lot done, and it's been really good, really successful. So we'll just keep on that path and hope that you also let approve or that you have questions about the pathways of choice. And this last one, professional learning and professional development is the bane of my existence. There are 200 people that need to be served in this, this process. And I have tried a number of different ways through my time here to meet the needs of the people here in the district, and it's almost impossible. So with the help of Bonnie LaSorsa and, and looking at different models out there, we started to, I said, "Well, what if we offer them choice in the path, in what they would like to study?" Right? Brilliant, really, because we want students to have choice, and we want them to have voice. And so first, I, the actual evaluation subcommittee and I, we decided to create a survey, so they were extremely helpful, in figuring out what people really wanted. Right? Where are they heading as it's connected to our strategic plan? So we identified what, what they were asking for. We also know that there are requirements to the Department of Education that need to be satisfied for 15 PDPs in English language learning and 15 PDPs in special education throughout their course of their five-year recertification. So we have to offer those courses as well. We had three full days to then decide how we were going to create choice for them. And the link there is the course catalog that was connected to the evaluation training, which is an annual training mandated in September every year, where that, where teachers then write their goals for the school year, their student learning goals and their professional goals. And we asked them to do that with the lens of the course that they were going to participate in. The goal was to create opportunities for them to be excited and passionate about what they were learning and create goals that they could collect artifacts for with the work that they had done. And so I will let you know how it goes at the end of it all. We had internal people, posting went out for people, anyone who was interested in teaching a course. We had a number of people provide plans. They had to fill out a plan and create a course. And then I also reached out to many external PD providers, one of which is providing professional development for our paraprofessionals, which was also, they had a couple of choices in that, which I thought was great, that had to do with students. One was about trauma. The other was about learning how to help special education students in the classroom. So there was that choice. And then there were a number of other courses that were offered. It was really important that I trained the people from outside that were giving the PD, because what I didn't want was for people to sit in front of someone for six hours for three days in a row. I wanted them to inspire teachers to then go and create something and come back and talk about what worked, what didn't work, how did it go, and then be able to actually do something in their classroom with students that they felt was important. And so the, the hope for the future will be to take a look at where we are. We've had our first one. We have another one coming up, two more. One in January, one in February. Will be the full three days. We also offered EL. Joe Marcus has a class that people love, so he's teaching that. We have special education with another woman coming in for that, Jessica Minahan, who, another person that people have mentioned, they wanted her. And then we will assess that, and the hope, if it goes well and people feel really good about it and inspired, that this continues to build. We build capacity, build more courses, and have the ability to make it a very robust professional learning for our staff.
So you're really lucky. I'm not going to talk very much, because we did this on September 1st. But I did want to just quickly review. Our priorities for the year are really to integrate with what the schools need and, and central office, the district as well, to make sure that our infrastructure, the foundation of it, is going to support not only what we're doing now, but going forward. And to refine the budget, which we're going to talk about later this week as well, to support, again, what we need going forward. So our, so the link is in here to the technology plan. Like I said, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about that. But our priorities for going forward is to continue to streamline the systems that we have. And we're looking for two things. We're looking to increase the efficiency for our users, and we're looking to decrease the cost as much as possible. We are looking at providing equity and systems and infrastructure across the district. Our new elementary school has raised that bar a little bit. We are focusing very much on student data privacy for all of our programs. So we are actively checking every program that we use and any that are requested to make sure that they are meeting the guidelines set forth. And we are upgrading, redesigning, and documenting our networks. This is one that we had on as a priority for last year, but due to some delays in shipping and getting equipment, we have not been able to accomplish our goals for E-Rate 2021 for last year's project or for this one's yet, we hope, over Christmas. And then our final priority for this year is to enhance the communication. And that means, at least to us, how we share information with our staff, our students, and our families. So that's the website and professional development, technology-based professional development, how we are getting news out to families. So that's an ongoing goal. And like I said, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
And then click on.
Click on.
Wareham Elementary. Yes. But we'll get, we can at least. Any questions before we move on to the schools?
I have questions. Am I the only one? Yes. So first, I just want to say thank you to everyone in the room for the enormous amount of work that has gone into this. I really appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. So I just went, my questions go in the order of the slides, if that's okay. So first, under social-emotional. So we've heard in the, at least at the last meeting, we talked a lot about attendance and how attendance is a concern. It seems like at every level in the district. But it's not identified as a priority, as a district priority under that social, and I think that's where it belongs. I think, it was maybe, it's, it's identified as a measure, but then it's not identified as a priority. So that was just my first question.
I note that a lot of the principals have put it in their goals for their evaluation. So I know that that's in there as far as their priorities are concerned. But I also, in the school quality measure, attendance is brought in through our power school system, and it's under student engagement measure. So we have that.
Well, you know how I feel about the school quality measure. I have a hard time.
No, I understand that. But we actually have a way in which we can look at engagement, and they look at engagement by also including attendance. So that helps us. It helps us.
How does it help you? But I understand it, it helps. So, okay, maybe you can see it there. But what are you, what are we, what is Wareham Public Schools going to do? And I understand, it's not easy. I'm not saying there's a magic answer. I, I'm not. But it's not even identified as a priority in the district plan. It's identified as a measure.
And it's identified as a priority in each school, so.
It's not, though. It's identified at the middle school as a priority.
And at the elementary school. It's in the goals. Huge.
Well, it's not in what we have.
Oh, you mean on the strategic plan itself, on the school improvement plan?
On the school improvement plan.
Got it.
It's not. So if it is identified there as a priority, that's great. But it isn't in what we have. So that, that's my, two more questions I had at the school level. So is it, do you have, I mean, it's not in what we have? Do you have something else that you will share with us at another time? Again, I get it, there is no magic answer.
What's the question? Are we still on attendance?
Yes.
So attendance is a priority, whether it's listed in this plan or not. It's a priority. And we're happy to put it in here, but it is a priority. I've spoken with all the principals, talking about their goals, and it is something that we need to focus on. And they have been focusing on.
Okay. But it's not, I, I mean this with the utmost of respect, right, to all the work that's being done. But if it's not being communicated to us, that's why I'm asking. Like, we just don't know. So if the elementary school and the high school have a plan, have steps they're going to take in order to improve attendance? If the district has steps, you know, if you're going to filter those down to the schools, of course, every school is different, and that, that's all. That's, that's what I was looking for in here and wasn't there.
Attendance?
That's all. So you talked about the career pathways, right? And maybe, and this is a question, I mean, mean, you brought it up in the district presentation, but it's also included in the high school piece, right? And I love that, that whole concept, I think, and, you know, a lot of different high schools are doing it also, and it's great that we're able to do that. But when you, when I click on the pathways that you provided us with, the, every single pathway as a requirement has an IB DP class, every single one.
Yes, they do.
So, and what if I'm a student who wasn't planning on taking an IB class? I mean, to me, I thought IB was a choice at the high school, and now we, you've got four career pathways, which are totally different and give students choice, you know, four different wonderful choices, but they all point them at IB. There isn't one that doesn't. And I understand it's a work in progress, so that was just another question.
So can I, can I add, so every career pathway has at least one IB or one AP class?
All of them have IB DP classes. The ones I looked at, if I-
They all have all IB or just one IB? They're all IB?
No, just a couple of classes.
Just a couple of class.
But they all include an IBC, IB DP class.
Okay.
So no matter what career pathway I chose-
So, and your concern is that if a student does not want to take-
Yes.
An IB or an AP?
Yes.
Due to-
Why? Wouldn't they?
The rigor?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there are some, I mean, unless, I, do all students at the high school take an IB class?
They should.
Okay.
I don't think they all do, though.
Not yet.
Yeah.
Not yet, but they should. It's equitable.
All right, but do you understand why I'm asking that question? Like, it's, maybe I don't want to take an IB class, maybe my child, I don't know. I don't have a child at the high school right now, so I'm sure there's pieces of that that I don't understand. But I was just surprised to see that that's how it was mapped out. And I took a look at other, like Harbor High School has career pathways, and they have, you know, different ranges, and some of them require AP classes, but some of them don't because some students are going to take AP classes and some aren't. Should everyone, maybe, but it just gives them, gives more choices. So I just think that pointing all of our career pathways towards IB, I don't know, is that the right way to go?
I think that it's the only way to go if we're actually going to offer equitable, viable, 21st century opportunities for our students when they walk out of this door. If we decide that some can and some can't, and we decide that, no, you know, they, they're not going to have that experience or be offered the opportunity for that experience, that's a problem.
Well, being offered the opportunity is different than telling them for this career pathway, this is the class you're going to take. And honestly, I didn't, I didn't realize that IB, I thought IB was a choice at our high school, not-
It isn't for the middle years program.
Well, I understand that, but what you're saying is that every child at the high school should be taking an IB class, and I didn't think that's where we were at with IB.
Well, I think that's a question that we have to ponder. I believe we should offer only AP and IB courses, period. I think every student deserves that level of experience in their educational opportunities, and the fact that we don't do that is inequitable and it's unfair. And I have a, that's just my position, it's been my position for 25 years, and I think it's wrong that we don't prepare our students to be having the absolute most rich experience possible in their careers in education.
Well, I'm certainly not implying that they shouldn't-
I know.
But let's have this discussion again when it's, the high school plan is up and they're talking about wanting to bring back core classes. So let's, so let's, because I don't want to take up the time here now, because it's really just specific to the high school. All right, I'll stop now. That was one of my questions.
Anyone else have questions on the district plan? Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the elementary school.
You have to open the mic. And then-
Thank you.
This one, have they been drawn in? It's like, you know, it's-
Oh, yeah, do you want to just hear this one or?
It's not mine.
No, no, no.
It's a, it's a, it's a link at the end.
Yeah. Do you want to hear this? Okay. I can realize. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, audience and school committee members and district office for allowing us this great opportunity to present our school improvement plan for Wareham Elementary School. First off, I would like to thank all of the staff that's here tonight, the staff at school, very much thank the, our school council, including our chair, Ms. Allison Partridge, who's here, so thank you for being here, Ms. Partridge. With us tonight, we have both department chairs, Ms. Bernard, Mr. Roach, Assistant Principal Russo, Assistant Principal Murphy, and Assistant Principal Dr. Nicole Richburn. And again, similar to the district, our core values continue to be relationships, perseverance, respect, and compassion. With the same mission throughout the district, we are compelled to strive on for. And, and this is all of the measurements that were used to analyze the data and build this school improvement plan. And before we begin, I just wanted to share something Ms. Bakayaki brought to our attention. School improvement plans are a living document. So this document right here is not an end-all, be-all, it is a living document. So anything that we discuss and ideas that we have and share, we can work on to continue and prove, because this is a school improvement plan, and that's what we're here to do, so I appreciate that and the great feedback. So we do appreciate the feedback, and without further ado, we're going to begin with our scholarship student learning with Ms. Murphy and Ms. Russo.
Good evening, school committee. Ms. Murphy and I would like to talk to you, I'm Mrs. Russo, about the scholarship and student learning for this coming year for our 2223 school improvement plan. Our priority look for includes student voice and choice. We want students to be able to view themselves as leaders and learners and be able to express what they're learning. So we want them to know what their purpose is in whatever they're doing in the classroom, and that's one of the things that we're going to be doing in our look for, listen for, is when we go to classrooms to do observations, we ask students, what is your objective today? What are you learning? Tell me about it. What's your purpose? What's your goal? We want them to be able to share that with us. In addition to that, we're going to be measuring this also through classroom observation. So when we go into a classroom to observe instruction, this is actual measure that we're going to be looking for within the classroom. We want students to be able to understand their portrait as a learner, and teachers are going to be developing lesson plans specifically to meet the needs of our students during their professional learning committees. So we look for things, standards that we maybe, we need extra effort in, we need more support in. So when we meet with our PLC groups, our professional learning committee, community groups, we actually develop lessons around those standards to support and foster our students' growth, foster their voice, as well as creating extra support for them. And then finally, we're going to have two new school-wide initiatives this year. We are starting a student council at Wareham Elementary School, and we are going to begin with a school newspaper with our students as investigative reporters and authors.
Good evening, school committee and audience. Another plan that we have is we're going to be looking at the modern learning and the depth and breadth of their learning. So this is, we want to make the students, we want students to make personal connections to their learning. As Ms. Russo said, why? Why am I learning it? But how does it connect to my world? Why is this important for me to learn? And it's not just because you're going to have to go to the grocery store, everyone, you do have to go to the grocery store, but maybe we're going to incorporate the arts with these students and understand the beauty of the world and connect it to their real world. And as Ms. Russo said about the student newspaper, I know the fourth grade students right now are beginning to write their little articles and bring it into their world, which is really a nice, deep connection for our students. We also want to make sure that we increase the real-world learning. So we're going to be going on across the internet, we're looking at newspapers, we're looking at what's happening in our world so that they can become a part of it. It's going to be, this will be measured through their student interest assessments. What, what do they think they need to know? What do they want to know? What are their opinion pieces? As we're looking at literacy and we have to work on and increase our writing, we know that opinion pieces are very important for all students to learn.
Thank you. Next slide, like, thank you. During our school improvement plan last year, we were asked about making sure we provided the evidence from last year, so these are the, this is the evidence from student learning from last year. We participated in Boost High Impact Instruction for 60 minutes, paraprofessional support was provided. Grades three and four utilized a team teaching approach last year. Again, remember, we were two schools until January 4th. And so they had a team teaching approach to work through their core content. Students engaged in new virtual math programs, which is ST Math and Extra Math, in which we're still conducting this year. And for the first year last year, we had the opportunity for PLCs, so professional learning communities enabled teachers to collaborate on student data and instruction. This time provided opportunities to review student exemplars, develop rigorous lessons from our decided upon high priority standards, and look at data. In addition, I would be remiss if I didn't also say that we also, through our student learning, gained two department chairs who are with us tonight. That was the first year that the elementary schools had afforded this opportunity, one in mathematics and one in ELA, who have offered a lot of opportunities for rich conversations during PLCs and a lot of peer evaluation, working through, a lot with their peers. So we really appreciate that, and that was part of our student learning for 2122. Okay, now Dr. Richburn and I are going to go through our social emotional learning goals.
Good evenings, good evening, school committee. So to start, the priorities that we'll look for and listen for is that students will have the opportunity to learn from lessons in the Castle and Ruler frameworks, so they can build their self-awareness and self-efficacy. In addition to that, we also have, even though we know kindergarten and preschool is not mandatory in the state, they do have their own standards as well called, from the Department of Early Education and Care, in conjunction with DSE, the Guidelines for Preschool and Learning Experiences, that include actual standards for social and emotional learning. So that's embedded and has always been embedded in the curriculum. So in addition to Castle and Ruler frameworks, those will also be a focus for that level. In addition, the guidance staff will assist teachers in providing SEL lessons and SEL support for our students. The SEL committee will collaborate with the staff and develop a new charter, so a new course on how we're going to approach, given that we know the last couple of years, the pandemic has really impacted the students, so we'll be looking at how we really need to navigate this and really focus on it for our students, because it does have to be different from the way we dealt with things in the past. The staff at West will implement components of responsive classroom to build classroom community, and the Ruler social emotional language will be, continue to be used throughout our school and the facilitation of ruler lessons will be offered in the Google Classroom and supported by the SEL committee. And lastly, the conflict resolution activities and stress management techniques will continue to be available through the SEL website, which we have for the staff to access at the school, many different ideas and activities for them to use in their classrooms.
Thank you. And we're really proud of our work at Wareham Elementary School with social emotional learning. We are very, very proud and excited to have the staff we have, who work tremendously hard each and every day to provide support for our students and their social emotional welfare to make sure that they are doing well each and every day and that they can access the curriculum. And we are very thankful that we're able to have the social workers, guidance department, and school psychologists we have. Last year, we, like SEL, we do a lot at West, but we also have PBIS that is still going strong, which is positive behavior incentives. We have a strong PBIS committee, with the chair is Anastasia LaPointe, our school psychologist. So we have initiatives in place, we have social emotional learning groups, lunch groups. Our school has a beautiful lunchroom that's private for us to have those lunch bunches together. We have SEL health class that happens, so we can talk about our social emotional learning there. I started virtual family forums, it's more for the social emotional learning of our families, our parents, just for their emotional welfare at the beginning of the school year. I started during the pandemic where we have these Zooms, I still call them Zooms, where families can just get some conversations with me about what's happening, and it, that was something we started during the pandemic and we've continued on. I've had one so far, I do one each term. So that's happening. Students are empowered to make choices to support their cultural, personal food preferences. We added that, I'll tell you what, you cannot deny the food choices we have now at Wareham Elementary, it does make everyone happier. We do not just have one choice, there is a plethora of food choices there. And again, our website, so thank you. Okay, community college career life, this is me. And this is, I'm it for this guy. So again, I feel like this is an area where we thrive in certain areas. We, after the pandemic and with our new school, we have offered so many opportunities for our students, and I really have to thank the PTA, also in conjunction with the staff, who really provided so many opportunities in the spring last year for our students to connect with our community. I cannot say enough about the Wareham Police Department, who are readily available each and every day, as well as the Wareham Fire Department. We have made connections in this district. This isn't just a Wareham Elementary School thing, it's a district initiative, which we didn't mention, but it is really grown substantially, that our students can go up to a police officer now, not be afraid, and say, hello, Officer Baptiste, hello, Officer Korea. They know there's, they know the police officers in our building, and it's been really, really an achievement for Wareham Public Schools. In addition, so we just continue our community relationships, and I, we just, I feel like we do a really great job with that. We need to continue with our interdisciplinary units. I do not, I want to, we want to make sure that we see as the administrative staff, a lot of engaging, strong interdisciplinary lessons. We're not teaching in isolation, it's not just a math lesson in isolation, it really should be interdisciplinary with writing including, reading including, and really working towards that, and it's an area that I still feel we need some improvement on, we are, it is one of our focuses. And again, I'm, the evidence of our community college career life is, is there, and it's a lot of, mostly performance-based in it, and I'm very proud of that. I think for our school, what we really want to tie it into is now, okay, so you're seeing, we're going to the orchestra, right, Ms. Russo, soon? So we are providing all these opportunities for students, but the follow-through is where I'd like to see the improvement, is those connections. I'd like those students to say, I'd like, you know, this is, I liked it, I didn't like it, whether it's an opinion they have about what they saw, or a connection that they can make to their future. I really want to see kind of that follow-through too, because it's going to help with their career path. That's why we're offering these opportunities for them. And now we are ready for Mr. Roach and Ms. Bernard, they are going to present our professional learning.
Hello, I'm Mr. Roach. This is my first time, so feel easy on me.
I'm Carol, Ms. Bernard, as well, this is my first time, so, but thank you.
We would like to share a little bit about our PLCs. We would like to share a little bit about our PLCs. Last year was the first year of having professional learning communities, and we have them throughout all grade levels, K to four. Last year, we spent a great deal of time looking at the district assessment calendar within our PLC groups to come up with assessments that fit our students with the curriculum that we use. So within our professional learning communities.
Yeah, and the professional learning communities are, it's a time that all the teachers across the grade levels can meet. And it's a great time. It gives the opportunity for teachers to share their expertise, to ask questions, to share resources, so that they can develop lessons and units. And, you know, like Bethany was, was referring to, it's not in isolation. It can cross the grade levels, cross classrooms. They can, they can move kids in between classrooms. So it's, it's a great way for the teachers to get together and not only share their resources and expertise, but also to reflect and to say, okay, did this impact my students the way I thought it was going to? Or how are you guys, how, how is your class doing this? Or, so it's just a great way for teachers to learn from one another. You know, hence the name, professional learning communities. So it's, it's a way for the professionals, the teachers, to learn from one another. And this structure, it promotes continued professional learning. It's not, you know, PD in a sense, you know, that the district brings in people from other districts and different professions. It's the professionals teaching each other. So it's, it's, it's on-the-job PD, which is great. So, and one thing that we've really worked on in our professional learning communities is the high-impact instruction that, which is what the district calendar kind of goes, coincides with. So the district benchmark and progress monitoring gives us the data that we plot, and we then form our high-impact instructions during this professional learning community. And these high-impact instruction groups target specific skills at specific levels throughout the grade level, which is great. And it's not only great for your lower learners, it's great for your higher learners. Every learner is getting what they need at their level, so it's a win-win.
Thank you. And again, last year was our first year of implementing PLCs, so we utilized that as our evidence. We also, yeah, and it was very powerful. And like I said, I have two role model teachers here with a lot of expertise that have the opportunity now to be engaged in, throughout the school, working and collaborating with teachers on a daily basis. So that is strong evidence of what we did last year. And now we just have the consistency because we are in one building. One difference that we did have this year for part of our school improvement plan was we did change the team teaching model in grades three and four. And we, in order to do the high-impact instruction, what happens is a, Patrick and Carol has devised a schedule where this high-impact instruction, we used to call it Boost, we're changing its name up a little bit, go from grade level to grade level. So we have, when everyone's with us, we have a set of paraprofessionals that go from grade level to grade level to really flood each grade throughout the day to get that high-impact instruction going. So in order to do that, that's why we changed the schedule. So teachers now in a grade level for grade four, the seven teachers all break up. The students all go into a different classroom, and all of the instructional paras are in that grade four, providing the support along with the teachers. And that concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
First of all, I don't really, I'm not criticizing my chair, but this seems like we're looking down on you and it's an interrogation. I don't really like that. I'd like to have a conversation, so thank you for being here and just presenting around the same level. I believe, so this is not a question yet, it's a statement. I believe that you're doing a great job in creating opportunities for kids to learn. I believe you're also doing a great job of what I'll call the socialization process so that they can evolve positively as individuals, as developing good character, et cetera, et cetera. What I struggle with, and admittedly, my interactions with kids are Mr. Palladino's. Some of Mr. Palladino's best, best, highest achieving kids, so it's a little biased, but I struggle with the following. Oh, I also want to say that based on the survey you did of staff, it appears you're doing a good job of making your staff feel like it's a really good working educational environment, so kudos for that as well. So with all those good things, I struggle with the fact that the state believes that more than approximately 80% of the kids are being sent to the middle school lacking proficiency in math and language arts. And that's an astounding number. And so the question becomes, if you're doing all the right things and if the professional development is occurring and the educational environment is the, is a good one, what's going on? So the first question I have is, do you believe that the state's definition of proficiency is a good one? In other words, do you look at eight out of 10 of the kids and say, great kids, but we know they're not proficient, and I wish I could do something about it, but, but they're moving on to the middle school lacking that basic proficiency? So that's my first question. Can you tell that they're not proficient?
Can you tell us where you're getting that data from?
MCAS. MCAS.
So, Mr. Swat, I think the word perseverance is a key factor in endurance. And endurance and perseverance, and this is why I say this.
I don't doubt you have those qualities.
No, 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 I'm saying that that's what we need improvement on.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, no, and no doubt. And I feel like we have outstanding teachers, we have an outstanding school, we have outstanding administrators, we are, our climate's strong. I feel like our lessons are great. I feel like we're going to, we work very hard. I want our students to work harder.
So Mr. Palladino's high-achieving students tell me that the disengagement of students occurs early. And my belief, this is my lay belief, is they disengage because they're not succeeding. And it's really hard to feel engaged with something, and you don't feel you're doing well. So, and, and so to me, the disengage is more a symptom than anything else of, of a failure to learn how to read effectively in math skills, et cetera. I'm particularly concerned with the reading because, as we all know, you read to learn at a cer, at a certain point. So it sounds like the, I mean, you do formative assessments, for example. And I know they're critically important to a teacher, and I know we give feedback to teachers with respect to the results of these formative assessments. And then you get these summative assessments, and you must cringe. You must say, what am I doing wrong? And yet, deep down, you probably think, I'm not doing anything wrong. So help me understand why this 80% is moving on to the middle school.
So if I could, so a couple, there's a lot of variables that impact student achievement and a lot of reasons why, you know, that we can take a look at, that impacts their performance.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I still, do you believe that the state's definition of proficient is a good one?
Do you have their definition?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But they are using that.
You're talking about one test on one day for proficient.
Well, yes, I understand for anyone.
I understand that, and you talk.
Time out. I understand for any one student, it might not be meaningful. But when you have hundreds of students, it is meaningful.
Well, when you.
Go ahead.
So, no, I don't agree that their definition is suitable for proficient. But I think that what we look at and what we see on a daily basis is a lot of kids dealing with trauma, and trauma can be a block to learning. And I think what we're, especially in most recent years, we're looking at that social emotional impact, and we're having to first get through that with the children. And, you know, especially at the elementary school level, we also have to engage the family in order to engage the children. And so it's a big mountain to climb, and we're climbing it every day. And I, I have to say that I think, kudos to the staff at the school, that I don't see a teaching to the test, which is something that we hear is so common in other districts, and it's something we, we don't like. And so what they're, what I see is they're really teaching for meaningful connections to the curriculum and to help the kids get through their day because some kids just have trouble getting through the day, never mind dealing with what the state defines as proficient.
The interesting thing is, my understanding is engagement of parents is highest in your school, for obvious reasons. These are their babies almost, right? And, and the further they get in, in a public school system, the less engaged parents tend to be. So it just seems like you theoretically have an advantage. They're deeply concerned about whether their kids are, are safe, healthy, learning, et cetera. And yet, still that, that, that number is, is cringe-worthy.
He's not counting the partially met. He's just counting, he's just counting, you know, dirty and blue. So keep that in mind.
I, I get, I get it, but there is a difference between meeting and partially meeting.
Yeah, sometimes it's one point or two.
And sometimes it's almost not meeting at all.
Sometimes, but often it's just a couple of points.
I, I get that.
So it's all relative.
I understand when you, whenever you draw a line, you have that problem. Nevertheless, department heads, any, you're closest to the, to the students and to the teachers on a daily basis. Any insights as why the middle school is, is getting so many kids who are not meeting or exceeding expectations?
The only insight I can give in high.
So the only insight that I can give is we have our kindergartners come in and some have never been ready to look at a book. So we're, we're starting at ground zero, and I think. Nope, now it is. Thank you for your patience.
They're rookies, give them a break.
A novice here, obviously. So I think we're, we're starting at ground zero. And those students that come in that are ready to read, they're already at an advantage, and they're, they're going to sail. And I, being a classroom teacher and having to meet all of those needs within that, that one classroom is very, very difficult when you have children who can read and you have children who, who don't know any letters. So what we tell our staff is not, don't look at the proficiency, but look at the growth. Because these kids are, if we looked at growth, I think that number would be grossly reversed.
Oh, I know it is.
Because our, our students are growing and they are learning. Are they learning at, are they making up those five years that they lost before they came to school? Probably not, but they're making growth and they're making gains. And I think to answer part of your problem, to answer part of your question, I think that's part of the problem, is they're coming to us ill-prepared. So therefore, we're passing them on sometimes ill-prepared.
What percentage of your kindergarten students have been to pre-K?
I'm not privy to that number.
Any idea?
I don't know the percentage, but I'm shocked at how small it is. I mean, given that we have close to 200 kids in kindergarten and only about 80 in our preschool.
65.
65, yeah, so not even. And when we ask, you know, what did they have for previous schooling, oftentimes it, it's nothing because it's costly or, you know, for daycare or, you know, if they move on from ours, then we've got them in our kindergarten most likely.
So I assume you can tell a huge difference between the kids who've been to pre-K and the kids who have not.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So if we got universal pre-K, it would be a godsend.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Other questions from committee members? Joyce?
In past years, in this presentation, we've talked about test scores, FAST. And we have those test scores.
We do have them.
Yes, but I'm just curious to know if those, you know, were those considered when you were making these priorities? What, what you, I mean, I can look at them, but I would much rather you tell me what they say, what they tell you.
This is the first year that we're doing NUIR, K through four. We've done NUIR, some part of NUIR in first, K in first.
Can you explain that to the other members of the committee that may not?
Pardon?
Can you explain NUIR exactly?
NUIR is a testing program, and it tests their reading and their language skills and their math skills. And it's, it's a computer-based assessment. In the past, we had NUIR in K1 for two years? Was it two years or three years? Three years. And we had FAST in grade two, three and four. So this is our first year with NUIR for the upper grades. So as we looked at those data points, we're trying to correlate them from last year's. So when we looked, what do you need?
Well, right, so I looked at them, but I wanted, you know.
Yes, yeah, so we look at those all the time.
Okay.
So as we looked at what our needs are, and that's when we looked last year, when we thought about our scheduling and how we wanted to bring the high-impact instruction straight through K through four, we realized that we needed to do that looking at the data from the previous year, the MCAS. And as we brought into this year, we said, okay, we really need to focus the high-impact instruction in all grades based on last year's MCAS. And when we took the NUIR in September, we took that data, we grouped the children based on their educational needs at that point in time.
So were those test results what you expected to see?
We, I was impressed on some of the test results. Our NUIR scores are. Coming into grade four did very, very well. So it was, it was good. It wasn't too, too bad. But we do have some work we need to do. We feel much more, um, and ready to go with the data that we have.
Yeah, the NUIR testing is, it's just a better reporting system than FAST was. And it's what the middle school was doing, and we were doing it in the early elementary. So now we are very consistent, and we have it all the way through eighth, no, seventh grade. Right, seventh grade. So, and it's a great, it's hands-on, you press it, the reports come up. It gives you strategies. I, I know Mr. Roach and Ms. Bernard are very familiar with the NUIR testing and its features and how that they're, again, bringing that data to the PLC groups to make informed decisions about the instruction.
Okay.
We're very fortunate with NUIR in that it, it gives us great insight to the final, phonemic awareness of a student. Phonics, vocabulary, the fluency in how they can read, and that helps us kind of tease out what, where we need to support them, where we need to foster where they're at and to bring them forward. It's, it's a fantastic piece. It records them actually doing a reading, and that's something then that we can go back and listen to. So it's a phenomenal assessment.
Okay, I guess the reason I'm asking the question is because this is how, well, how I felt after the MCAS presentation. Like, we, we saw the scores, so I saw these test results. But what we're not seeing is how that's informing your, you know, how you're going forward with the students. That's, that's the piece. So I'm just curious, is that you have focused standards at each grade? Have you had to change those? You have? Okay.
The process that we usually take with third and fourth grade is we look at the MCAS, we look at all the scores, we look at every item. And we're looking at the items where our students did not do well. And then we look at what that question was. What's the standard on it? How many standards were based in that question? Are we looking at the vocabulary? Is it the content? Is the vocabulary that the students might not understand? Then we have a chart we put together, all the standards are there, and we group the standards. So when we're looking at grade four, which is very similar to grade three in their ELA, there are actually only about five standards that we really need to focus on. That we found out those are the red lights, bing, bing, bing.
And I would say our main focus is, is reading, um, reading comprehension and being able to write to that. And that is our main focus this year. And that's when we go in, that's what we like to see.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that, you know, we have told us that this very close to.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have two, two more really quick questions, okay? Um, that I would, would like to ask all the schools. The first one is the school quality measure. So I know we talked about this. Um, I'm just, I'm curious to know if you get value from the school quality measure from that, those surveys? I've already shared my, I won't even use the word concern, just my question with Dr. Schwab. So I'm just curious how you feel at the school level? Be honest, right?
Well, I do think it has, I think it has its merit. And I, and I think that over time, it will give us the data that we're looking for. I think, was there, how many districts are participating in it? Eight, eight districts are participating in it? Would I look at, for instance, let me flip back, that we need work on like dramatic play or performance. I don't necessarily believe that's true. So it's not a true measurement of what's happening in our school because we happen to have had, how many plays, three or four, I thought was, I thought we did an outstanding job. So it didn't really pick out exactly where we need improvement on. The best data that we get on school improvement is that I think that the panel we have right here are very situationally aware. We talk about it every day. We know where our improvements need because we're very observant. At being a reflective practitioner myself, I know where my needs are. I know what I need to improve on. We moved a whole two schools last year. We were in a real transition year. This year we're not. I've got more time. I'm doing more evaluations and observations and conversations. We spoke to that. Our new superintendent shared his goals, so I thought, wow, that's a really good idea. I'm going to share my goals with the school. Then the APs shared their goals with the staff. I think that we're doing a better job of observing and evaluating, having post-conferences, having difficult conversations with staff where we need to make improvements, including my own. Coming from a very transition year to a year where we're settled, we're ready and we're working. I think that's the best data that you can get. Regardless of professional, it's staff surveys. You know, we're always trying to time the professional staff surveys. If the staff's feeling good that day, we're trying to look at these, this quality measures. But the real, real evidence of where we need to improve comes from each, you know, all of us and us sitting together in our admin meetings every week and saying, okay, what do you see? What do we need to do? Comes from school council, the, from a parent's standpoint and community members who told me, Beth, can you communicate with us weekly? So I'm going to add a weekly communication or a newspaper. It would be great to have a student council. So that's the feedback I think that's the most valuable, along with data. I think that we can make improvements on MCAS. I have to be honest about that. I think we can look at that and say, all right, where are we going to make these improvements? How are we going to do it? What needs to be done? And I think it's going to be through evaluations, observations, strong conversations with teachers, follow-up, and making sure students are persevering through their day-to-day work and happy about it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I think she did.
I just have a couple of quick questions. When you do the PLCs, how, how often do they meet? Weekly or?
Yes, they meet once a week.
And so are they given direction from administration or department chairs? Where they create their own interests and themes and topics? How does that work?
Last year was more handheld, where we were giving the agendas. This year we, we're trying to turn it over to teachers and let them come up with an agenda.
So by a grade level then, they would come up with whatever they want to work on together? Okay, thank you.
We have a new math program, so we're focusing on math. Last year we focused on ELA. Last, we have a new math program, so we're focusing on math during our PLCs. And also changing our groups with the data that we received from NUIR and also our progress monitoring. And then we'll both do our groups based on that, but we're hoping it, it's more driven from teachers.
Okay, thank you. Next question is, have staff been trained in responsive classroom? All staff been trained?
Well, mixed bag, Mr. Bajol, if I can say, mixed bag. I'd like to have it to be more consistent throughout the school. I know that at mine at Forest, they did the first six weeks. They did nice book study on that. Oh, gosh, Mr. Roch, you could speak about responsive classroom at Deacon School. There was a training, but that was what, eight years ago? Maybe more, yeah. So it's in bits and pieces. We love it. It's expensive, so we practice what we know about responsive classroom.
So when you said that we're, him elementary staff will implement components of responsive classroom, who decides what those components are?
The teachers do. And through our PLCs and through our community, through social, emotional, our learning, we can decide that. But it's just where, what we need to be doing. All of our teachers, we do morning, um, meeting, that's consistent. And through that morning meeting, there's, uh, small discussions about how was your day? They bring up small topics, that nature. So that's consistent. Timeout spaces, consistent with responsive classroom. So those are the two features that we have that are consistent about responsive classroom. And then from there, we also do a lot of PBIS, which we're pretty consistent about, including the daily pledge and our responsible, respectful and safe.
Okay. The word you're going to hear from me tonight from all, for all three schools and three plans is specificity. When it comes to the goals and the action steps, because I circled what Jeff mentioned of students will have the opportunity to learn from lessons. To me, that's not specific enough or not really taking more of an active voice enough. And I'm hopeful, especially as we look to scholarship and student learning, that we can get more specific. You mentioned the literary focus, focus on writing. And yet in terms of specifics on writing or, or reading or specific measurable skills, I don't see a lot of that. Uh, and this isn't just the elementary school I'm talking about. It's in a lot of the plans, I, I, I don't see the, the specific measures for success. And so hopefully that's something we can talk about going forward. You said it's a living document. Um, and that's something we can talk about, and you guys can talk about as a group of administrators and, and staff going forward.
We certainly can, um, add details of what it is we're doing. I think that you can hearing even details tonight and we can absolutely put those in.
No, I, I understand that. And I mean, there's so much and sometimes you just get overwhelmed in the number of initiatives. I would rather see fewer goals that are measurable and can be attacked and get those small successes to build success than whole litany of them that, mm, uh, nice, but a little vague maybe. So that's just one person's opinion. But thank you very much for the work that you've done. I, I appreciate it and thank you for coming tonight and hope the two newbies will feel okay. And you're really not that new.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello. Ah, good evening. I share with you my team tonight. And I have Sue Tabor, who is our Science and Social Studies Department Chair. Andrea Erickson, who is our Unified Arts Department Chair. Catherine Frain, who's an, an, as, um, Assistant Principal of Special Education and Department Chair. Lisa Breeze, who is our ELA Department Chair. Dani LaFaber, who's an Assistant Principal. And Sandy Pot, who's an Assistant Principal. And I, of course, I'm Tracy Cottier. Nice to meet you. Okay, I'm going to go quick through the beginning. It's the same for all of us, our core values. We've taken on the district core values, the mission for Wareham Middle School, vision of a graduate. And then I want to stop here just for a little bit of time to explain how we go about creating our plan. How we go about assessing how we did last year and how we go about creating this plan. So it starts for us in the summer. Dr. Schwab's great about sending us all of the information that she has. Um, and as it comes in, I look at it and then I close it. I look at it again, um, and then I'll share it with the team. And, um, so it starts there. In August, we meet all together as a district. We have, um, some discussions around, um, how the year went and what the year is going to look like. None of us really want to be there at that point because we're ready to start the new year. Like we've got a lot of things to start. But it's, at the end of it all, it's a great, um, time that we've had a chance to really look at the data. So one of the things we looked at this year, um, and I, we anxiously every year for it to come out, is our accountability data. And so I just want, I'll wait for one minute. I just want you all to know, um, and I'm not sure if you're all here, but back in the day, back, back in the day, when MCAS began, um, we were always, I think, from the very beginning, a level-three district. Um, and that was because of Wareham Middle School. And every year we were level-three because of Wareham, um, Middle School. And every year, especially in math, um, we were tormented and tortured because we were the reason the, the district was level-three. So we started in two thousand and fourteen as having an accountability ranking of sixteen. We went to two thousand and fifteen, our accountability ranking was fifteen. Two thousand and sixteen, our accountability ranking was sixteen. Two thousand and seventeen, there was no ranking because now we're going to change MCAS and change what we do. So two thousand and eighteen, the accountability ranking went to twenty. Two thousand and nineteen, we were on a roll. We were at an accountability ranking of twenty-six. We had COVID years, twenty, twenty-one. This year we had accountability ranking of thirty-three. So when you say that we look at the data, we look at the data. I'm always looking for us to do better and our staff is always looking for us to do better. This is not an easy job. But we're here for the kids. And what we want is an accountability ranking as high as we can go, but we want it to go up every single year. And so that accountability ranking is very important to us. We wanted to show it to you on a visual for Wareham Middle School. We're not where we want to be. Jeff asked a question about proficiency. I believe in the MCAS proficiency. I, I can basically tell you where the kids are going to score before they take the test. What I don't know is, yes, it's a one-day test. I don't know if they had a good day in that morning. So do I think some kids are going to do better than they did? Certainly. Am I surprised with some of my students? Because we've looked at the data throughout the year, I already should know where they're going to be. So are there surprises? There definitely are surprises. What we, we look at the data constantly. We have data team meetings, um, teams of teachers look at the data. We're looking at individual data. So they're going class by class, the students that they had last year, the students that they have this year. And we're comparing that to the NUIR data, which is very comparable. Um, and that's why we like the NUIR data. So really, nothing is a huge surprise. And then we go to this plan. What did we do last year? We're keeping track of that all year. What did we do? And you'll see that presented here tonight. And where do we need to go based on this data? And so that's, MCAS is definitely a huge part of it. It's the first part of it, along with NUIR, um, and our benchmark data, our writing data. And then we look at our survey data. So one of the other sources we use is the SQM. And, um, it is objective, it is consistent, and it can show us our growth year over year. We were very, very proud of our SQM data that came back this year. Of the five major categories, we scored the highest, which would be ideal or approval in two of them. And then we scored the next one down or growth in the other three. We had zero areas of warning and only two areas that we were asked to watch. Both of those areas are addressed, directly addressed in our school improvement plan.
Professional staff survey, another piece of data we look at all summer. We reflect on it all year. Conducted yearly at the conclusion of the school year. Twenty-question survey allows members of the leadership team to gather information from professional staff. This information is used by the leadership team to reflect and inform best practices. Our goal is to have all survey responses fall in the moderately or strongly agreed categories. And we're very happy with this year's results with ninety-two percent or higher approval rating on all questions.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk about the Scholarship Student Learning Standard. The slide is up there so you can see what we looked for in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two priorities. Student Voice and Choice. And for us, that was an expansion of opportunities for student and staff relationship building, um, voice and choice. Modern Teacher, which was the identification and response to academic needs and challenges, a creation and implementation of performance-based assessments. And then Depth and Breath. We had implementation of expansion of content area initiatives, exploration and expansion of individual strengths and cultural opportunities. So I'm more linear, so I'm just going to skip to the next slide so you can see. It makes sense to me with those priorities, this is what we did last year. We created and implemented the performance-based assessments in all curriculum areas. We included, um, student choice and voice in all of the PBAs that we created. We increased small group intervention and individualized support within classrooms. We restored after-school opportunities for help because we had COVID before that. We updated and revised benchmark assessments based on the data and what teachers were seeing in most curriculum areas. We informed, um, and had placement for advanced and enrichment and intervention classes with, um, teacher data, NUIR data and classroom data. Um, I also think it's important to note that we also use our writing benchmarks, the data from that. And the information that we share with families comes out every time we give these assessments. So after we give the NUIR assessment, we send home a report to all families so that they're aware of where their student's progress is at. Then if, oh, she already went back, she's good. Tracy talked about our mem, our measures that we use. I added a little bit more. But our priorities for this two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three are listed. I don't need to read them all to you, I can if you want.
We can read.
Hello. Hello, how are you tonight?
Good.
Hi.
Hello, better now? All right, so I'm a very incredibly linear thinker. So if we could actually start with the evidence and then I can show you how our thinking is moving forward. All right. So if you look in the top left, this is just kind of what we're, we started the year with. We had entered in from a COVID year, we're back in person, but we still have a lot of online initiatives to recognize students through social media, through non-gathering ways of celebrating student success. We also wanted teachers to get back in the practice of having some embedded programs for behavior plans within their classroom. How do we address things in the moment? We started monthly meetings for PBIS again and took feedback from our student council, which was able to meet once again. Um, we also had High Point Starters School, which was amazing. We were able to service twenty-four students. And for our staff and students, we created moments in our day, during our school day for CPT, after-school with faculty council. And for students with Big Brother, Big Sister, by facilitating that and creating moments to build relationships for both staff and students, both formally and informally, because we want Wareham Middle School to be a fun place to learn and be for staff and students. So that's kind of where we were last year. And if you look at what we're doing this year, it's kind of looking at what PBIS data showed us, what discipline data showed us, what attendance data showed us. And it's saying we needed to do some things more deliberately. So we did have, we do this year have some push-in lessons from our counselors. So that's guidance council, social workers going into the larger classrooms and teaching direct lessons on areas that discipline data found to be areas of weakness. So, um, this is unkind behavior versus bullying. It's kind of racial issues and we had some slurs that came up. We also have good anxiety versus bad anxiety, reflections on report cards. What do you need to do to self-advocate for yourself? That's a big one for our students. And strategies for dealing for, with peer conflict. Back in person, there's more conflict. Students don't know how to interact. Students don't know how to interact in the same way anymore. We also have High Point servicing thirty-two students this year with eleven on a wait list. We're also looking intensely at student attendance. We're looking at the data, counselors are calling parents when there is a discipline, or a discipline attendance trend, where a student has been out, finding out what we can do, making plans to support parents, and also trying to provide families with some supports so that they can try to encourage their students to get back into school. So that's what we're doing in terms of social emotional learning.
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm going to talk about community college and career life. So, last year, a group of five teachers and I got together and made a goal that we would create a college and career month that we did in the month of March. And during this month, all teachers in the building presented careers in their subject matter. And students researched the difference between community colleges, trade schools, and universities. Our students also learned about how much college costs, creating a budget, and scholarships and student loans. Our teachers came up with fun and innovative, innovative projects in their classes during this month. Like, for example, social studies teachers had students made pennants for careers in social sciences. Some science teachers had students create trading cards based on science careers. Art students created vision boards to plan their future. And some seventh-grade students researched trade, trade jobs that don't require college degrees. We did a school-wide bingo game that was actually way more successful than I thought it was going to be, where students had to get signatures from teachers, and they had to fill out the whole bingo card. Some of the questions were things like, did you have to take out student loans? Do you have a master's degree? There were some specific colleges on there. And it was a great opportunity for students to talk to some adults in the building they might not necessarily talk with. And then, at the end, if the students handed in their bingo card, and it was completely filled with teacher signatures, we had prizes from local colleges and trade schools that they received. So they were psyched about that. And this year, we plan on expanding on the bingo cards and adding some new, different questions, and adding a, like, something on the back that kind of shows you the different career paths that you could take. Because all of the kids had the bingo cards. And so I was like, if we could put some information on the back of the card that the kids can, they'll look at and kind of remember, and get an idea of different career paths that they could take. And teachers this year will also expand on lessons that they taught last year and are encouraged now that we are allowed to have visitors, to have speakers come in, possible field trips. I'm working on bringing back the field trip to the MFA Boston so that students can continue to learn about some different art careers and museum careers. And of course, we'll continue doing the sweatshirt day, where everybody wore their college or trade sweatshirts. And we also had a day where students dressed up as their future selves.
So, in relationship to our professional learning goal this year, we use most of our data came from the, the SQM survey, our teacher survey, but also kind of our conversations that happen as we're meeting on a, on a monthly basis. We use benchmark testing in all of our content areas, where the department chairs create a benchmark test based on recent curriculum that is given to all students regardless of which teacher they have. We use cross-scoring so that I may be scoring a teacher, a student I don't have, which is, you know, similar to how an MCAS is scored. And then we, then we use that to look at how we teach. Why you, you know, they did well in this with this teacher. And we look at teacher strategies for that data. We also look at the data from NUIA. We meet as data teams once a month by, by department to look to see, if I'm understand, you know, looking at reading skills, that applies to other classes as well. And gee, I didn't realize, you know, that students' level of reading might be affecting, you know, their other content gains. So we use that. We meet once a month in those meetings. We implemented common planning time this year, where one day a week, all of the grade level is off at the same time. And teachers either meet in teams, because we are now teaching within teams, to discuss students' successes and strategies, or by content area to maybe talk about or to work on building new performance assessments, or implementing different lessons or units, you know, bettering our units instead of just saying, oh, we have that. New ideas and moving them forward. So, we're, we have, in this last year, eighty hours that we spent in that time strengthening what we already have, taking our lessons and always looking to, to better them. We had a large group of teachers that were part of the modern teacher committee. And we spent many hours looking at some of the parts of that, of that program. And we implement, several teachers implemented strategies to work on building communities within their classroom, to make their students have a voice of who they are and what that classroom is and why it's important to them. And all the teachers that were part of that committee not only implemented them last year, but have moved those strategies. I see them, as I walk through this year, I can see the conversations and the, the, their mission statements, their, their personal class mission statements that came from that platform. We use playlists. We've continued to use playlists, which came from Modern Teacher, which allows students that may be absent for, for health reasons, for other reasons, to access to curriculum, to know what was missed in class, or to even plan ahead. If I have students going away, instead of that whole request of, you know, what's going to be on the table? The parents know, the caregivers know, the student knows. I can go right to my playlist. I know where it is. I forgot the paper, it's there. Those are strategies that we took from Modern, when we went through the Modern Teacher platform that we've continued to implement. Looking, what we're looking for this year, as we move forward, we're continuing our common planning time. It's very structured, it's in our calendar. We know when we're meeting, we know when it's grade alike, when it's grade-level peers, when it's whole department, or when it's team time. And, you know, just that once a week, even talking about strategies with, you know, a particular student that some, you know, hey, I noticed, I noticed, I tried this, this works. That time is, can be just as valuable as building, you know, a new lesson. And that keeps our, that kind of connects, I think, all of those pieces that we're working on. We're continuing. Our professional development this year, as Dr. Schwam mentioned earlier, has given us opportunity, our own voice and choice, to look at where we are as educators. As a thirty-year educator, my needs may be different than a new teacher. And instead of everybody sitting through the same pieces, everybody was happy and excited about choosing what they were doing, and signed up, and had great conversations. It was a very active first day that, you know, of talking about, oh, what'd you pick? It was like being in college again, and, and, and picking what was right for you as a teacher. And hoping that, at the end of the year, when we look back at what the outcome is, that we find that that was a positive piece that will continue to move forward as well.
Questions, concerns?
We're looking for it. Jeff?
First of all, this professional staff survey. I looked at it, and I thought to myself, somehow Tracy got to fill out all the forms for her staff.
I do. I threaten them.
Because the results couldn't be that good. But in all seriousness, they were outstanding. And you should, the whole team should take, feel really good about the environment you have created for your staff. A short story, which Dr. Schwam knows well. I walk my dog all the time, and I meet wonderful people walking my dog. And one time, I met a highly educated couple of parents who have two, two young children in the elementary school, and who are enjoying their experience at the elementary school very well. But they literally said to me, we're thinking of moving out of town because of the middle school. And I am very happy to say that five years ago, I would have thought to myself, okay, I'm gonna, am I going to tell the truth? Or am I going to try and convince them to stay because that's what I'm supposed to do? And this, this time, I was able to say, you're wrong. The perception you have about the middle school is simply an old one. And I absolutely believed what I said. So, as one person who has been following the middle school for a long time, be very proud of the job that you're doing, really, be very proud. And I think, Dr. Schwam, we talked them into staying. Yes? I think, yes. Well, I'm pretty sure. I see them all the time. As I said, they're both highly engaged and highly educated parents. So, lucky kids, but also, I think you're going to be seeing these, these two kids over time. So my, my question for you is, the meeting and exceeding standard numbers are a little better than the elementary school, but I'm impressed with the SGP. As some people may not know who are watching this, any number over fifty is a good number. It's not like you're trying to get to a hundred. Because fifty, by definition, is the state average. And you have four out of six numbers above fifty. And I noticed, for example, that you've got a rating of twenty-two, for example, in fifth-grade math, but an SGP of sixty-four. So you're doing really good things for, for kids who come to you, not really well-prepared. So here's my unfortunate question. Do you believe that it is better for these kids to come to you unprepared for what you have a right to expect? Or do you think they should wait to get to you? Because it's just frankly not fair to put them in a position where no matter how much growth you get to them, they're still not meeting proficiency?
Wait for what? Are you saying, repeat them?
Yes.
I think, in the past, we weren't repeating kids at the elementary school.
You were, or were not?
Were not. I think in the past. I think in the last few years, under Dr. Chandler, I think that has changed. And there is a very thoughtful position about retaining students and whether...
I know the data is mixed, in terms of whether it's a good idea or not.
Right. And so, I do think that we've had conversations with that, about this. What the research tells us is, is that if we're going to keep students back, we're going to keep them back in kindergarten, first grade, second grade. The research tells us that in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, keeping them back probably is going to do more harm than good. The dropout rate is going to increase. So, there's a delicate balance. And I know Dr. Chandler and I have had many conversations about this, and that there, there is that conversation. And I know that especially in kindergarten, first grade, we're providing services in the summer to students that they feel need those services, and they're having the hard conversations. So, I, I do believe that in some instances, we need to keep them back. But I do believe in some incidences, is it causing more harm than good?
That's a very thoughtful answer. Thank you. Is there anecdotal evidence that those kids that were kept back appear to be, have benefited? Can you tell? Maybe I should have asked Dr. Chandler.
Yeah, I mean, I, we can certainly, I, I'm not sure, because I don't always know that, unless I'm going back and looking. So if I'm looking at a student, whether I'm going to retain them or not, I'm always looking, have they already been retained? Somebody's bedtime. Oh. Sorry. Sandy has lots of alarms set. So, I'm always looking back, because I can tell in power school if they've been retained. Maybe you should go hand to hand.
There's worse sounds.
So, I'm always going back to see if we've already retained them. And if we've already retained them, then, you know, what, have we tested them? Do they need to be tested? What, what have we done to support the particular child? I mean, sometimes it comes down to the fact, and Mrs. LaSosa can attest to this situation. There was a time at the middle school, we had certain administrators who were like, you, you're staying back. We were keeping thirty, forty, fifty kids back. And let me tell you what we were living with. We were living with a hellish society. We were living with kids in sixth and seventh grade who were going right downhill. And it was bringing us all downhill. We weren't benefiting anywhere. Should we have been keeping them back? Why were they failing? So, our job right now is to get them so that they're not failing. I, I have good data, I don't have the exact data, but term one has ended. And I looked at the failure list, and I'm like, wait a minute, there's got to be a second page to this. And there wasn't. So, you know, it, it's part of building a culture too, that, that we're teaching our children, you can succeed. Maybe they're not proficient in MCAS yet, but do they deserve to move on? The majority of them do.
You just said something really interesting. So, I know the educational environment has improved tremendously over the last five years. And what you're saying is, part of the reason is that we are not keeping kids back.
Part of the reason we're not keeping thirty or forty kids back. Mrs. LaSosa was here when we were doing that, and she suffered the consequences of that, her, the beginning of her teaching career. But that was something, you know, wholesale, why, why are we keeping them back? And, and what are the benefits of, of doing that? But there were, there were a lot more underlying issues. Why is that many kids failing, is the question, too.
Great answer. Thank you, and thank you all for the work you're doing.
April?
So, I, I know that Jeff had made a comment when the elementary school was up about a history of possibly sending unprepared, I think he, kids into the middle school, from the elementary school. And I know that the MCAS, over the last couple of years, with COVID, hasn't been the best measure of things, especially with kindergarten, preschool, people staying home, people not enrolling their kids until first grade, some of them, because of COVID or family situations or, or whatever. So when you're seeing the kids, and I know that the culture at the middle school has changed drastically. And I think you guys, your dedication to the kids is, is unbelievable. Do you feel that the kids that were unprepared were, when you're young and you're in, in elementary school, the parent engagement, sometimes the kids are just excited to be at school, be around adults that are paying attention to them. So they're like drinking the Kool-Aid. They're very excited. They're in school, they have friends for the first time, seeing peers, seeing other things. Do you think that part of that is, when they get to you guys, their unpreparedness isn't necessarily academic? But now they're at an age where they're observing some of the traumas that the elementary school had mentioned, that they had seen at home or been, like, surrounded by. And now they're able to either process it better, once they get to your school and articulate it. And now, that's where it's coming out academically, where they withdraw, or they freeze with the testing and where the data comes in with that transition, as opposed to it being like an academic deficiency. Because from everything I've heard or seen from kids that I, you know, interact with, and it is, you have those families that are very involved. And you have those families that are not involved. And that's going to be from kindergarten up to the high school. And a lot of times, by the time they get up to the high school, it's the same group that's followed them. You know, the involved parents at the middle school become the involved parents that stayed at the high school. Whereas it trickles down in the elementary school. It seems more like there's more, but it's because the kids are more excited than the parents. So do you think that that has a correlation more than the academic deficiency?
I mean, I, I think the kids have an academic deficiency. I, I don't like the term that they're being sent unprepared. I, I mean, the high school could claim the same thing about the middle school, that they're sending them unprepared. Are we sending them kids that aren't proficient? We certainly are. I think that the elementary school had a good answer to that, that they're already starting behind, so you take them where they're at. I, I think the middle school's lucky because we have three grades that we can show growth. The elementary school doesn't necessarily have that, so they have to build in their own point of how to show that growth, right? So, and, and maybe that just takes time of how we're going to show the growth. Here they were, they weren't at ground zero, they were below ground zero, you know? And then we brought them to this point, and then it's our job to move them to this point. And I, I think we get a little bit of wiggle room because of, according to the state for the proficiency rate, to be able to graduate. It's a little bit lower than that five hundred, you know? So, I, I think a lot of things affect that, and, and trauma definitely is part of that. At the middle school, we have the point where parents lessen their attachment, I would say, and, and maybe their support academically, their help academically. So, it, it's more known, the academic means, because there's no more. A lot of times, the parents can't help with that academic piece, you know?
Thanks.
So I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Joyce?
I guess I don't really have a question because I won't ask you the school quality measure question because you kind of answered that already in your presentation. But I will say I appreciate the detail in your plan and the work that went into it. Thank you.
And I just want to say congratulations on the accountability ranking going up consistently over the years. That's a big, that's a big deal.
That's always our goal.
And I'll throw a softball out there saying I really love the bingo idea for the, it really did. It humanizes teachers for kids and they can see maybe what it takes or, oh, this person struggled too or had to persevere, had student loans and did what they needed to do. So that's great. Have you ever considered a career day? It's a ton of work, but I don't know if you've ever had one at the junior high, middle school in the past?
I did it and then I thought, wow, that's a lot of work.
It really is.
It's definitely.
Maybe someday.
I think it's something that we were talking about though, as having presenters into the community to present about careers. So we're just trying to get our students to think early on that, you know, what you can have a career and what is that career? And it might not be something you have in your family, but it could be something that, you know, that you've never thought of before. And we want them to have that dreams and desires.
And then just to end, because I'm going to repeat it again like I did with the elementary, just to be consistent and equitable, under scholarship and student learning. There's nothing that you list on the bottom there for priorities that aren't important or beneficial. Everything there is. But it seems to me that a lot of it's written from the teachers will do this as opposed to what will the students do? So like even in the first example, we'll design, implement and score and reflect upon two performance-based assessments per subject. Excellent thing, that should be done. But maybe from more of a result-oriented view, students will show growth in conventions or idea development from the first assessment to the second assessment by X percent or something that just gives a little.
Yeah, and we definitely have that.
A little more teeth.
Yeah, we definitely have that. So our teachers have that, like, and Lisa's teachers will share with us for across the curriculum what the writing should look like in grade five and grade six and grade seven. We just don't put that in here. So we certainly can share that information. It just, it does get to a point where how much do you put into this? But we certainly have that. We have that as part of our curriculums, we have that as part of our meetings. And the teachers come up with that information.
Kill two birds with one stone and throw it in if you're doing it anyway. And that, but it's the goal. What is that goal? What is that growth going to look like for kids? Something, again, just specifics, that's all. Thank you.
Definitely.
Again, thanks for the hard work. We appreciate it.
I also love bingo. What a great idea.
Here we go. Just some introductions here for the high school. I'm Scott Palladino, the principal. To my right is Kim Kavicki, the assistant principal. To her right is Andrea Cannon, the assistant principal in charge of special ed. And we have Justin Skelly, who is our newest department head. He is in charge of math, world language, physical education and health. So thank you for having us here. And we'll turn it over to Kim, who's going to get us started on the core values.
Good evening, everyone. So I did want to spend a little bit of time talking about the new Wareham High School vision of a graduate. This is something that our school is very proud of. We went through a quite extensive process, very thorough and inclusive, including all of the staff, student feedback, and over the past two years have come up with this document. And this really represents what we and the students believe that the students should be leaving us with the skills and the knowledge that they'll have when they leave us and graduate going out into the real world. The process started back in the spring of 2021. And it worked concurrently actually with the WPS 2026 strategic plan. And we were able to come up with the five performance outcomes, which are critical thinking, communication, perseverance, responsibility and emotional intelligence. This document and these values replaced our prior 21st century learning standards that we had in place for about the past eight to 10 years or so.
So then based on the vision of the graduate is. Based on the vision of the graduate is the WHS mission. So these are like our promises. So we promise to provide a safe learning environment dedicated to communicating effectively with compassionate and honest conversations. We promise to encourage and model respectful relationships and inclusive learning opportunities. And we promise to foster learning that challenges everyone to reach their greatest potential.
So one thing I just wanted to add here is because the district strategic plan was also in the process of being developed, we were able to align our high school vision with that and actually have three of the performance outcomes show up in both the strategic plan and our vision of the graduate. Speaking from the experience of seeing multiple different schools' vision of the graduates through the NEASC process and other ways, this isn't necessarily a common thing where the high school is able to align with the district vision in terms of this piece. So we actually are really happy that we have that vertical alignment, K through 12, and we're all working towards that common goal.
Okay, so you'll hear this for the third time, but you know, some of the data that we collect with the help of Dr. Schwalm is the MCIE SQM and the school quality measure. We will be talking about that throughout the presentation in regards to the levels. We also take a look obviously at the performance assessments that Dr. Schwalm mentioned were published. And then obviously, as you heard from the last presentation at school committee, the MCAS data, which is dissected, we dig down as deep as we can and we make sure that the staff understands where we're at. We know we have some work to do on that, so we'll be talking about that quite a bit today. We also have the pleasure of having IBAP SAT testing that we receive the results in July on those students that take those advanced courses. So there's a lot of communication and dissection of that data over the summer when we do meet as department heads. We also take a look at our college acceptance and placement rates. As you've heard, everyone is focused on discipline. We have weekly meetings on discipline and attendance. These are two big things and you'll hear about that a little bit later. But definitely these are numbers that we look at. Obviously suspensions, expulsions and dropouts are also identified. Our special ed referral, district placement, and then the professional staff survey is all interwoven into our plan. And we'll be talking a little bit more about that in future slides. So we're going to get started and turn it right over to Justin for scholarship and student learning.
For our scholarship and student learning goal, probably if you want to go to the evidence, we can start there for our last school year. So in regards to student voice and choice, we piloted the NYPD personal project last year and enhanced some of our online course availability. For modern learning and depth and breadth, we start to implement our NYPD curriculum and units and began a new advisory schedule and setup. So the five new courses that were added to the courses studies include botany, marine biology, African-American literature, digital photography, examining racism and genocide in history for those. Now, for this year, some of our priorities specifically include updating curriculum for two courses per department, creating curriculum for five new electives and creating at least two cross-curricular opportunities per department. We're also in the process of finding ways to bring back some additional core math and core ELA classes for grades eight, nine and 10. And we're going to continue to emphasize and expand our Viking block, which will allow students to select what courses to receive enrichment, enrichment in.
So I'm going to talk about social emotional learning. So in the 2021, 2022 school year, we knew with transitioning students back to school that we were going to have struggles. And so we added social workers, knowing that this was going to be an area that we needed help in. So at the beginning of the year, they did a lot of just individual support for kids. Kids coming out of hospitalization, step downs, kids in crisis, things like that. So a lot of the focus was on individual students who are struggling, anxiety, having a hard time coming to school, being around their peers again. So then we started to see through dean's meetings and SSC meetings, common trends. So sounds similar to what Catherine was saying. But we created groups on mindfulness, substance abuse, peer relationships, grief and loss, conflict resolution and managing social media. So we, those were a common trend. So the social workers started groups on those and they worked with students in that area based on either discipline referrals that came up or just like common themes we were seeing through with kids. We also, our guidance department worked on their curriculum. They created some presentations and workshops that they developed to support post-grad planning. For instance, resume building, financial aid and scholarship nights and working on junior presentations so that they could start the process earlier. And they also started to use Naviance with a lot of fidelity. So we also focused on one specific TLC counselor. So our therapeutic learning center ranges from eighth grade to 12th grade. So we identified one of the new social workers to work specifically in there. They brought more resources in for that. We had an evaluation of our TLC program. And the recommendation that came out of that is that our behavioral systems were strong, but we needed some more therapeutic supports. So we were trained on the AIM curriculum, which is accept, identify, move on. So that was, we had, the whole TLC program was trained one day on that. And then I guess after this, I'll talk about how we're moving forward with that. We also had stronger ties with AMP and High Point. The AMP program added an additional day last year to come into Wareham High School. So they added one more day to their schedule. So for this year, we, now that kids have transitioned back, we got their ear into the belt, we're focusing on decreasing discipline referrals in unstructured times as well as in the classrooms. Like Mr. Palladino said, we have dean's meetings weekly where we talk about attendance. We talk about discipline referrals. We also have our SSC meetings that we talk about these students. So what we did this year is we aligned the guidance counselors and the deans. So each dean is aligned with a guidance counselor. The thought behind that is like there's an antecedent to all these behaviors. So they can work together and they can determine if, you know, what the best strategy is to change these behaviors or get these kids into school. Sometimes it's social emotional stuff, you know, sometimes it's other things. And then within our TLC program, we created a health and wellness class. And in that class, we do groups of the AIM lessons. So the social worker, the behaviorist and the teacher work together to teach AIM lessons. So social emotional lessons.
All right, so I'm going to talk about community college, college career in life. So we had new career exploration path opportunities in our TLC and young adult rooms. So they had more locations and opportunities for vocational placement within the district. So while, while many things were more normal last year, areas and job placements in the community were still apprehensive to have students from the school come to them to work due to COVID. So we had to be a little bit more creative in some of these placements. So we had some of the students working at the transportation department. We also had them working on more options integrated with different departments and also helping with some of the administrative tasks and skills that they were able to help us with. We had more pre-vocational curriculum developed that our job coach worked on. And we also incorporated life-centered education transition curriculum. We restructured our, one of our para positions to work directly with the job coach to help support and allow from servicing of more students with one job coach and multiple students that need it. It's not possible for that person to be in, you know, 10 different places at once. So this helped streamline that a bit. And then as far as career exploration pathways, which you heard about earlier, we had a career exploration committee and they actually recommended four new pathways to explore for our students and came up with drafts of what those look like. We revamped, this was the start of the revamping of the e-portfolio process. So our comprehensive portfolio where the students compile all of their work over the course of the five years that they're with us. We had to kind of adjust because they were, students were working from home for several years. And so they weren't able to necessarily meet every requirement of that. So we had to adjust what was expected of them in their senior exit interview. And many of the questions we found were just more reflective and we learned a lot from that. The staff really liked to hear from the students what they learned during the pandemic, for example. So we adjusted that process a bit. We adjusted pathways within school to career. So there was sort of a career track for students that were on more of a career path and then more of a vocational track for students that were on that track. We also had our library media specialists who spent time creating a pretty extensive community resource bank. So it has information of contacts within the community that we can reach out to for all of our staff to utilize. So not just certain ones. But if there's say a science teacher that wants to explore something further in the community, there was contact information and ways that, that we had info on how they could support. So in terms of what we're looking for this year, we have a NEASC accreditation visit, which is coming up next week, Monday through Wednesday. And I know several of you will be a part of that, so we appreciate that very much. So we were looking forward to having a successful NEASC visit this fall. We're very much on track to do so. We will have a completed Wareham High School vision of the graduate, which you already saw the start of, with rubrics so that we can assess student performance and actually assess the extent to which the students are meeting the outcomes that we want them to meet. And we're also aligning the standards with the report cards so that the parents will actually get a rating and the students as well of how they're progressing in terms of meeting those outcomes. We will have a, we have, will have a successful international baccalaureate visit, which we actually had back in September. And then the last part of the vision of the graduate piece is aligning the e-portfolio to the new vision of the graduate. Right now it aligns with our 21st century learning standards. And so we have a site-based management group that's solely dedicated to updating that process and aligning it with our new vision.
Okay, so I'll end with the professional development. And as I'm sure you're aware, Dr. Schwalm does an amazing job with the professional development. Unfortunately, because of the NEASC visit, we've been kind of precluded because we had to really focus on the NEASC visit. But we're excited for Wednesday, we'll be doing the happy dance and we'll be involved in the district-wide PD for the last two sessions of full in-service. So that is very exciting. One of the things that we were able to focus on was the modern teacher PD. And this was rolled out during the pandemic, as you probably know. But also we had PD to continue the rollout because we felt it was important to try and maintain some of the momentum that we had during the pandemic. We also had the pleasure of getting a lot of new technology infused into the high school, which was really game-changing in many ways. So not only did we get updated laptops and desktops for the staff, but we also got the interactive boards that were placed in all of the classrooms. And Bonnie and her staff did an amazing job to make sure that it was very seamless in the transition, whether it be from the laptops or moving from the LCD projectors, which were mounted on the ceilings, to these interactive boards. It was really very seamless and it was a great rollout. So we also moved on. There's a tremendous amount, as you can imagine, of departmental PD that was incorporated into the Monday meetings, some of the early releases, some of the in-service. That was, that was something that we continued to maintain. We were a member of the Cape Guard Collaborative. As you know, we have a representative on the committee there. As, as you know, we have a representative on the committee there, from our school committee. And one of the things that they provide is every October in the fall, they provide professional development. And it's a really important program because they really do a great job of allowing for PD to take place for our singleton-type teachers that would teach some of our elective courses and our foreign language department as well, where a lot of times, we can't incorporate that type of PD into our PD days because it might be a department of one, one content area, or maybe a couple of small, a couple of teachers that just have a small caseload in those elective-type courses. So it was really great for us to be able to do that last year. Unfortunately, this year, because of NEASC and the training and the preparation that we needed, we weren't able to do that this fall, but we look forward to doing that again in the future. You heard a little bit about IB and MYP, but there's also training that had to take place throughout last year to make sure we maintain our requirements for the program, but also to transition to the MYP. We also sent out AP teachers for MIE training. We had several teachers take advantage of that last year and again this year. It's a great training. Mass Insight for Education is the acronym for MIE. And they do a wonderful, wonderful job of bringing in world-class practitioners to instruct not just our teachers, but teachers in the program from the region and from the state. We've had college board training specifically for AP teachers as well. And our Project Lead the Way program was influential in our computer science, our computer science classes. More than half our staff were involved in peer observations. And of the half, almost three-quarters of the half had that as a goal, that they were going to take part in the peer observation and bring things back to their instruction. So it was a really great endeavor for our stu, for our staff, once again. We had a tremendous amount of collaboration cross-curricular and also through departments. As you heard, I believe the middle school has a common time where the departments can meet. We have had that for many years and continue to have that and allows for a lot of collaboration. The deans really got involved in the poly bath training, which was offered at the district a few years ago. And was really, I think, one of the best PD days we've had in a long time. And it really got, right, but the PD, the full-day PD that we had, really, yeah. Right. But the one PD day, really, the staff just loved it. We incorporated it into the whole year. And the deans really took a lot of that into their development and into their meetings with staff to really integrate that into the classroom management. So that's a kind of a recap with evidence of what took place from a professional learning standpoint. And then I will talk about what to look for, for this year, for the priorities. So obviously, NEASC is a really big endeavor. It's done every 10 years on purpose because of the amount of time it takes to prepare, to get people trained, to send people out to visit, and then to create your report that you need to do. A few years back, they created kind of a midterm, if you will, progress report, which is now called the Collaborative Conference, which you may remember, we had that almost two years ago and received great reviews from that. And they assigned us with three priority standards to look at, which we are focused on. One of them ironically is the vision of the grad, which you heard a little bit about a few minutes ago. Staff is going to continue to be able to participate in content-appropriate PD by choice, which is really exciting. And I know everyone has already talked about that, but that is exciting. You know, we give students choice, someone said we should give staff choice. We're going to continue to dissect the MCAS scores, continue to identify standards of concern, and creating a plan to address these concerns through various means, including reading, writing, and speaking. And as we talked about, trying to find a way to really bring back those core academic classes. So before I move on to, to questions, I, I just want to thank all the students, staff, parents that were involved in this plan, whether it be through surveys or actually being involved in the creation of the plan, our student advisory council, our student advisory reps, and the school council for their input and feedback. And obviously, for the, the staff that's here tonight, I want to just thank everyone for that. I also, maybe I'll answer Mr. Brazoli's question when I, when I make this statement, probably not, but I'm going to try. This is aligned, obviously, with the strategic plan for the district. And then kind of an umbrella underneath this is every department head has to create a department head improvement plan. We've been doing that for over 12 years. And obviously, that has to be aligned to our school improvement plan. And then from there, as all teachers have, they have to create their goals, both professional practice and student learning, which would then be aligned to the department heads' goals. So there's, there's some pretty good articulation here, if you will. And, and it does get very specific as we continue kind of down the ladder. So not sure if that answered your question, but I wanted to throw that out there and try and be proactive. But certainly, we would, we would love to answer any questions you may have and certainly would appreciate the feedback as well. Who's first? Joyce?
So, well, first I want to say, I am the representative from Cape Cod Collaborative. And you started talking about the professional development and I started thinking, oh, great, because, you know, they keep track of who goes.
Sure.
And they make a point during the meetings to say who goes and who doesn't go.
Do we get the thumbs down this year?
Well, I don't know, I'll let you know next, tomorrow.
I think we're going to because of, you can blame NEASC. All right, that's your out for this year, but we'll be back, we'll be back in full force.
All right, good, good.
Not at the high school though, so we're gonna, we're gonna get slapped on the wrist this year.
All right.
But we'll be back in full force next year, it's a really great.
Okay, all right.
It's a great program.
And you talk about the students going out into the community. So the day that the students come to our office is like the best day of the week. In fact, today, they couldn't come and everyone was saying, well, why aren't they here? We, it's, we love having them, so we're really glad that they're able to come.
No, it wasn't NEASC.
No, I wasn't going to be in the office.
We're not going to be able to blame NEASC after Wednesday.
I was actually at the middle school, so I couldn't come, I couldn't have, yeah.
But we appreciate on, on that, Joyce, you've been doing that for so many years and we appreciate that. It's been a great spot for our students. I know Andrea just raves about the students that go there and the experiences they have because it's not menial tasks, you really make it vocational in nature.
Well, I'd love to see it the other side, yeah, yeah, it's really great. So some of my questions are, so in your plan, you talk about bringing back core classes. So tell us a little bit about that.
Well, I, you know, over the years, as everyone has, we've had to make cuts. And a few, a couple of years ago, we cut a math teacher. And a year later, we cut an English teacher. And unfortunately, you have so many core required classes that the students need to graduate based on their graduation. So unfortunately, what ends up happening is you just can't run the core classes you once were able to run. I think it was Tracy, she made a great point. Like she said, we know who the kids are that are going to fail the MCAS. Like before they even come through the door, we know that. And what we've been able to do in the past years was to identify those students and give them supplementary support. We really can't do that right now. But we know we have to work within the confines of the budget. So we also know, like, when I talk to you guys on Thursday, I'm not going to be asking, obviously, for an, for the English teacher and the math teacher to be reinstated. So what we need to do is work within our staffing to come up with better ways to try and run these classes once again. It was frustrating to lose those positions, but I, I get it. So we've already got some ideas. When we have the course of studies, we're going to be presenting those ideas to you and hopefully you'll be supporting them. And we're also going to have to probably run some core classes with larger-than-usual numbers to make that happen. So we're just going to have to really think outside the box on that and, and make it work. So more to come when we're in front of you, hopefully in December, for the course of studies.
Okay. So help me reconcile the need, and I understand the need for the core classes, and the pathways that require a high-level IB course.
Right. And I think when you were talking about that earlier, my, my head was spinning. You know, the pathways are recommendations. And obviously, at the end of the program, we want to have something that they receive, maybe a certificate, you know, something so they can move on from that and, and possibly extend the learning post-high school. So we really need to look at how we're going to do that. But at the end of the day, I think the important thing to understand is we have to educate the students. We have an eight-period schedule. They have to be in a class every period. So there, you know, there's going to be some decisions that we're going to have to make to implement that. But I think when we look at it, there's also opportunities for some of these programs and classes that we already run. So to just kind of create a pathway and identify that pathway, I think is going to be helpful. Because when you look at those classes, a lot of them are already being run. And also, if we have enough interest, there's opportunities to kind of move some electives around. But we're real tight with electives right now, so it's going to be a challenge. But I think, you know, if you were to ask me, you know, seven or eight years ago, you know, would we have, be able to have an IB program? I wouldn't be sure. And here we are with kids graduating with IB diplomas and, you know, kids getting into top-notch universities. So I think it's just, you know, we've got to continue to stay the course and try and think outside the box. And, and, you know, if it takes a year longer to make that happen, so be it. You know, we're here for the long haul. I've got a great staff and they're all very young and they're going to be here for the long haul. So, you know, if it takes an extra year to, to do that, I think it's okay. So, you know, I just think it's something that we need to really spend some time on and try and figure out. The committee has done an unbelievable job. They did a great presentation to us last year in regards to what they're looking to do. There's some opportunities there. So I, I hope that we can make it work. And, you know, maybe, you know, I remember when I wanted to get wireless in the whole school. And I remember going there during summer and running lines because I wanted to get wireless. And it was cheaper if I ran the lines than if the company did, the company could make the connections. And we did it one section of the school at a time. So I think, you know, maybe we have to kind of have that mantra, it's a little bit at a time. And, and, you know, maybe it's just one pathway, one, one year, we can make it work. So I just think having that vision and, and knowing kind of, this is where we'd like to be, this is where we are, now let's work backwards to, to kind of get there. I've seen it done, I could bore you to death tonight and tell you how many different times I've seen it done at the high school.
Okay. I, I appreciate your answer. I think my question had more to do with the fact that the pathways only included students who would take those IB classes. But I'm sure we'll have more conversation about that going forward.
I think we're definitely going to have to work through that because, to your point, we don't want to preclude anyone.
Exactly.
You know, and if, if the kid, you know, and we, and we hope that those IB courses would be compatible with kind of the college prep where everyone could take those.
So, and this is a question, this is my last question, I promise. And I've asked it before. Sorry, should I maybe lose my train of thought? We have made this investment in IB at the high school, in MYP now. And I've asked, what is the advantage? What, what, what are we giving to the students who aren't taking the IB classes? What?
Well, every student is going to have the opportunity soon to be in the MYP.
Okay. Well, they're not going to have the opportunity, it's all or nothing.
Right, right.
So that's what we've been told. But, so what is our return on that investment that we're making? And not only in money, but in time, and time is very valuable.
Time and money, absolutely. So, so the return on the investment for the MYP?
And the IB program, for the students who aren't getting an IB diploma, because there are very few students getting an IB diploma.
Right.
So what is?
So, yeah, I think the return is, we have over eighty-some-odd students having the opportunity to take an IB-level course. So while maybe the return on investment isn't in a form of an IB diploma, it's in the form of every student having an opportunity to take an IB course, and most do. So I think that's the return. To me, this is, my biggest return is we're offering more advanced-level courses. We're definitely, you've heard me say it, we're pushing the envelope. I, I think that's what the charge should be to push the envelope. But also, what I'm seeing anecdotally is the schools that the students are getting into are far superior now than they were six and seven years ago. It was unheard of to have a kid get into Harvard. And in three years, we had two students get into Harvard. And the student that was looking at Harvard ended up going to Brown. So, and that's just the, the top level, obviously. I could, I could go on and on. Our students are coming out with robust transcripts that have a lot of advanced-level courses. My letters of recommendation are usually for kids that are in AP and IB. I just, it's just, it's so easy to write now because of the, the talent, the way they push themselves. But I also want to make sure, and I, I hope this is part of your question, that we're not just, we're not just focused on those kids. Our larger percentage are students in the middle. And, and one of our priority areas, as well for NEASC, is our priority area two is to really continue to focus on those students. And we've created classes. I remember Mr. Swett one time, probably like 12, 14 years ago, said every student should have Core Academics. And it was, and I, I still remember when he said that. And I said, he is absolutely right. Unfortunately, at the time, not every student could have Core Academics. But now every student can. It's just called a little something different. Core academics, if they have an IEP, it's not Core academics if they don't. And, and that's something that we've been able to do to work with those students. We also spend a tremendous amount of time, you might have heard, the SSC meetings, the Student Success Council that meets to monitor students. You have heard today as well about our enrichment period, where we have a, a period where students are able to select who they go to for extra help. Those things weren't in place a few years ago. And those are all various levels of support to make sure that we're supporting all students. And by law, obviously, we're student, we're supporting students that have IEPs. So I think we're doing a better job as a school of making sure we're not focusing on kind of one group. We're focusing on every student, every day, and, and that's really important to us.
Well, I understand that's something you've, you've always, you've always done. But I mean, I guess my question, so I read somewhere in these reports that every staff member at the high school was required to have MYP training.
Correct, it's one of the PD days.
So if they weren't required to have that, if they didn't have that training that day, they would have had a training on something else. So my question is, is that an effective training for all of the staff at the high school? I understand it's a requirement of MYP, so that, that's.
I think, I think it is, and I think it was. And it, it's forcing teachers to kind of think outside the box. Traditional teaching is so yesterday. And, and moving forward with higher-order thinking, student-driven instruction, student choice, I think those are all things that resonate with our students. And when you go in and observe those type of classrooms, they're more engaged, the students are more involved, the students are, are not bored. So I, I think it is causing a bit of a pendulum shift. Obviously, more work to be done there, but I think it was an important PD day.
All right. I guess one more question, but I won't ask for an answer. And it's going to be a very unpopular question, but I'm going to say it anyway. Yeah, well, I know you're already unhappy with me, so, so this is going to make you more unhappy.
That's why they, they put you together.
Yeah. Well, I just, just. So when we look at, we've talked many, many times about enrollment, right?
Sure.
Declining enrollment. And when you look at the enrollment numbers, of course, it drops between eighth and ninth grade, we expect that.
Right.
But it drops considerably between ninth and 10th grade also.
I think that's deceiving. I think it's dece-
Well, I don't know. I, I mean, I'm sure you, I'm sure we could talk all night about what the reasons for that might be.
I can probably give you a sh-
Well, wait, let me just, let me ask, let me, because there are many more, there are other people here who would like to speak besides me. But I'm just wondering if we've ever considered that IB is the reason that some students leave?
I, I don't think it is between ninth and 10th. I think what you see is there are a large percentage of ninth graders that are retained, and that's why you have that fluctuation. It's very rare because we meet with parents when they leave. Matter of fact, Ms. Kavicki has a meeting with one tomorrow to find out, you know, what it is, kind of have an exit interview. And I don't remember ever anyone saying, I'm leaving because of IB. I know it'd be tough for a kid to pinpoint that. But it's, it's, I think it's deceiving because students have to attain a certain number of credits to be, to matriculate to the next grade level. So I believe that's why you're seeing the fluctuation in numbers from eighth to ninth and ninth to 10th.
Okay, thank you. Sorry that I took so much time.
April?
So I just have like a couple of things. So for, I just came back from the MASCE, MASSS joint conference, which was great. But one of the common themes, and I know every one of you have, in every school, your focus has been attendance. And we're so not alone statewide. Every single superintendent that I spoke to, that's their priority this year. So it's not a Wareham-specific issue. So I just did want to, I know you guys are all making that a focus. But, you know, a lot of people outside, and we tend to hear a lot of vocalization of people who have negative things to say, for whatever reason in the community, they seem to have the loudest voice. So when people are saying that this is a Wareham-specific problem, it's not. So I know you guys are doing everything you can, reaching out to families, doing everything like that. So I did just want to make that statement, that you guys are doing what every other district in the, the state is doing, and it's not a Wareham problem, especially coming out of the pandemic. The other thing, so question, I know that Joyce had asked about the pathways and the IB. And it kind of ties into what I look at as when people leave the district. And I don't necessarily believe, from what I've heard from family, it's not necessarily, I've never heard anyone say anything about IB. But one of the top schools that we do compete with, which is one of the number one or top 10 schools in the state, compete with, which is one of the number one or top ten schools in the state, is an IB for all school. And it's, as a charter school, but the fact that we have the opportunity and from what I understand and just, I just want to make sure I'm correct, when we started IB, whether or not they go for the test is where they get the credit, but it's basically to give them the critical thinking and sort of that kind of continuation of outside the box thinking with their curriculum, that kind of, I think we had, one of the meetings that we had, I think it, we had students that came back who had graduated from IB and made comments that it helped prepare them for when they were in school, whether they get the diploma or not.
Right.
Um, but I do think that one of the issues with them leaving, and I know that this isn't necessarily listed on the high school's list of priorities, um, I think some people are more leaving for athletics. And I know that we've had issues with the conference and with competitiveness, and I do know that that drives families to what looks like they would be academically inferior schools to us because of that. Um, is there a way to kind of tie in some of the other draws that bring kids to a high school aside from AP and IB? Because that's those middle students. I think that we're losing to that sort of draw, whereas they, they may not be academically superior, they do well in a core class, but there are other things that draw someone to stay in a district or not. And is that a way to shift or add, or is that incorporated at any of those as a priority?
Well, it's, students from, at the high school level, really, uh, once they're in ninth grade, they, there's not a lot of students that leave Wareham High School. I know there were two that left for athletics, so I know exactly who you're talking about. Um, but it's very rare that a student, once they're in ninth grade, leaves the high school, unless obviously they move. Um, the, the transition happens as you would expect from eighth grade to ninth grade. And we're making strides on that front because we get the list of students that are accepted to the various schools, and I'm specifically talking about Upper Cape. And what happens at Upper Cape is, you know, they're going to take their forty-whatever, fifty students every year from Wareham. But what I'm excited about is that when we didn't have eighth grade in the high school, they were going after our kids that should be in the college prep program. And what has happened over time now that the students in eighth grade are in Wareham High School and understand the expectations and rigor and, and get, you know, they're making decisions sight-seen versus sight-unseen, Upper Cape has actually taken kids that eight, nine years ago they never would have taken. So it's exciting to me because those are kind of the kids that spin their wheels in seventh and eighth grade and then in years past, wouldn't get into Upper Cape, and they're now getting in. So that's, that's exciting to me because we're going to have the same number of kids leaving for Upper Cape every year. It's kind of, I believe it's in their charter.
But I never look at kids leaving to go to, because we're a part of that region.
Sure.
So I never look at kids going to Upper Cape as a school choice issue. I look at kids that are going to ORR, to Bourne, to Carver, to like more similarly, you know, structured schools, like an, like a regular town high school as opposed to a regional or a vocational school. And those to me, like even going to a private school, some families, that's their tradition. That's what they want to do. They want to pay for their education, but I'm more worried about us losing, whereas you want to add these core teachers when we're sending kids who should be staying in our district and who should want to stay in our district. And I know, as we said with, had Jeff had mentioned, with the reputation of like the middle school, and some of that is old news that needs to be corrected. And we know from so many families that have been there or even gone to them, I was, wow, it's, I can't believe how great the elementary school is. Like I have some clients and people I've talked to who have kids in kindergarten, first grade, that are in the elementary school. They're like, I can't believe how great the school is. It's like, well, I told you, like I've, you know, like I, I know we have so many amazing educators in all of the schools and you guys are all very passionate about what you do, but it does, it makes me really sad that people look so negatively on so many things in this town when there has been growth, as you guys have all mentioned, in all of your data. It's all been in the positive. And we're coming out of like three years of muck that we shouldn't necessarily be, like it should be scratched, starting from ground zero for you guys instead of looking backwards. So I think for the IB pathway, I do agree with Joyce, it should kind of be looked at as like a choice, but whether or not maybe they take the IB exam or not, or if it's like more MYP as opposed to IB because it's similarly structured, um, just something to think about for that.
And, and I appreciate what you said because I think the, the takeaway for me is, is really just making sure we continue to highlight the programs we have because, to your point, you know, you don't want to lose a kid to another district when you have the same program. It's not a superior program. And I think, you know, we've talked about athletics and I do think, you know, um, you know, with the changing of the conference, I think that's going to help out as well. So I do think there's some good things that you're going to see coming down the road in, in regards to that. But I still think, you know, we talk about this all the time, you know, we really push our Facebook page and push our, our PR, but I think, you know, just continue to get the word out there and hopefully it, it continues to stick. And, um, and we want, obviously, the more students we have, the more programs we can offer, the more teams we can offer, the more clubs. So we definitely hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Um, just, by the way, I a hundred percent agree with you about the evolution of the students that the Upper Cape is taking. It's about time they did precisely what you're talking about.
Thank you. It's been awesome to see.
Completely agree. Um, switching gears just for just a moment, it sounds like NIASK is a real burden, it's an onerous process, et cetera, et cetera. So my question to you and the superintendent is, is it worth it?
I think it is. And, um, and I'll explain why. Um, I think sometimes as professionals, we, being in the school two hundred and whatever days, two hundred and thirty days, two hundred and forty days a year, you do get your blinders put on. So I think it's really good to have a neutral group of peers to come in and investigate and give recommendations, not tell you what you need to do, but give you recommendations on what you should look at. And then you solve the, the, I don't want to say problem, you solve the concern. So I, I, I think it's important in that, in that front. I also think it's important from a leverage standpoint. And what I mean by that is, one of the things MSBA wants to see for a high school is the NIASK report and they want to see-
Really?
Yes.
MSBA?
MSBA. I have to, I, for the statement of interest, I had to upload our most recent NIASK visit report. So it becomes leverage. I am convinced, I'm a hundred percent convinced, had we not had the decennial visit in 2011, we would not have a new roof on the high school from the MSBA. I'm a hundred percent convinced. I'm also convinced that it definitely helped, it may not have pushed it over the edge, but it helped for the Boilermakers as well because that was something they asked for that. So it's a point of leverage in that regards.
Is that part of their charter? I mean-
I'm not complaining, Mr. Swett.
I would, I would have never guessed that, that that would give you leverage with the MSBA.
It does. And I think too, it gives us leverage on, in other areas as well when we're asking for things, whether our technology, I'm, I'm convinced that it definitely didn't hurt when we had some recommendation in 2011 to improve the technology for instruction. And thank God, we, and I'm not giving NIAS all the credit, but thank God we made those adjustments because in the pandemic, having the Chromebooks was, was huge. And there were other schools that were spinning their wheels for four weeks trying to figure it out. I also-
Because I've also heard colleges don't care.
It depends on the college. But we have to, uh, check the box that we are an accredited institution in our profile and that gets turned in with the transcript for any student that's applying to a college and then the final transcript when they're, when they're going to the college. So, um, there were, there, at one point, um, the W's in Massachusetts were protesting the cost of NIASK and it, it's come down substantially from twenty-
The cost has come down.
Cost has come way down.
I'd like to hear that.
Yes. This, this decennial visit in 2011 cost us over twenty thousand dollars. This visit, if it cost us over three, I'd be surprised. So the cost has come drastically down. So it's really, and, and it's also excellent PD for our staff as well to have the opportunity to do visits. Uh, but most importantly, for the students, um, I, I, I think it, it obviously does a lot for the school that they'll benefit from through instructional practices, um, through, um, various, uh, opportunities that we can expand upon, uh, based on some recommendations. So I, I think it's good. I don't want to speak for Dr. DeAndrea, but that's, that's my take. I know you asked both of us.
Well, you, you just told me two things I wasn't aware of, so thank you. But, uh, Dr. DeAndrea, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I, I do, I agree with Scott. So I think it's a good exercise to, to go through the standards of excellence that they have, um, look at where you're at, reflect on where you're at, um, have pairs from other school districts come in and be able to hear input and get feedback. I think it, it, it is something that is beneficial.
Okay. Um, so I have, I have to confess, I went through something I could only describe as cognitive dissonance as I was looking, um, at MCAS and school improvement, et cetera. Um, cognitive dissonance for two reasons. One is, I had two years in a row with a GPA average for my tennis team of ninety-seven.
I think I, I might have saw that on a jacket or two.
It's, yeah, you might have because it was, to me, it was almost, to me, it was more, actually more important than the championship.
Absolutely.
And, um, and last year was seventeen kids had that average. The prior year was twelve. So, yeah, I'm spoiled because I had absolutely nothing to do with that. Um, and the other source of the cognitive dissonance was, I, I look back and in two thousand and eighteen, meeting or exceeding in language arts for tenth grade was ninety-five and two thousand and twenty-two was thirty-three. And for math, it was seventy-five and then twenty-two was nineteen. That's like, huh? I mean, that's like, first of all, is that apples and oranges? I mean, I know there's COVID in between. I get that. I get that. But that's like, what, what happened? It's-
I, I think this, I could spend hours talking about what happened, but I-
I'll take an executive summary. I'm sure the chair would be happy with an executive summary.
So I, I think a few things, obviously the pandemic, right? That's the, you, we're getting rid of the core classes, but, I mean, there's so many different pieces to the puzzle and, um, and I'm going to ask Justin to chime in in a minute too because he's really dissected it e, even in greater detail. I, I think the biggest, um, shortfall that we had, we had a third of our students fully online. And while we were prepared and vetted and ready to go, I think on the backend, um, they weren't as engaged as we would have liked. So I think that's part of it. I think that, that, again, the pandemic, I'm trying to give you the executive summary here, that the, the core math and English classes being eliminated, students not testing for multiple years, I know all schools dealt with that. But, um, I think those are some of the things. And, and Justin and I actually, uh, we talk about this pretty much weekly between, between my-
And by the way, SGP was also not good.
Right, right. Which is a, a level, uh, gauge. Justin, I know we talked about this, do you want to just chime in on some things?
Uh, yeah, just in regards to, uh, specifically for the grade eight because we have, uh-
I wasn't even looking at eight, but te, but go ahead.
I was just going to say in regards to grade eight.
Okay.
For this, uh, for last year, we had seven sections of grade eight math running. Uh, for this year, we have an additional section and we've capped the, uh, class sizes at twenty as a way to try to, uh, address the, um, uh, uh, you know, kind of, uh, help improve our grade eight scores.
The class, the class sizes were a little larger in eighth grade than we wanted. So that's one thing that we did. We took away a, a ten through twelfth section and created an extra eighth.
Yeah.
So those are some, that's something that we did to be proactive. But I, I think it was really a perfect storm and then students coming back, it was, it was a, it was a tough transition for teenagers. And in talking with principals and other schools in the conference, um, they dealt with some of the same, uh, same issues. Kim, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that as well?
Well, I did want to, I did want to add too, we had an adjustment in the, um, the structure and rigor of the test.
That's why I asked, is it apples and oranges?
So to, to some extent, you could say that it is. Um, there's, there's, I mean, from a math, let's say math for example, math didn't change, right? Like I'm, I'm not saying that that happened, but the way that it was assessed did change in some aspects. And I think for, we did really well for a lot of years working up, um, and doing well on what they call the legacy test, um, for tenth grade. And then, um, they did raise the bar, which I don't think is necessarily a bad thing. I think it's, I think it's good, but I think they raised the bar and then a pandemic happened and, um, we're still recovering from that, I think. So we have work to do, no doubt, but I don't know that you can say that it's apples to apples in every scenario.
So is it realistic to get back to the ninety-five, seventy-five?
We're going to continue to work towards that at all times.
I'm sure you are, but-
I mean, I hope so. I would like, I believe that, that all students can get to that if, if, you know, we can, we can recover.
What do you think?
Yeah, definitely. And we're taking, uh, taking act, action steps, steps this year to make that happen. So for instance, uh, the students who take the MCAS in, in grade ten, most of them are taking geometry. So this year we're, um, we're working on updating the curriculum in geometry, resequencing some of our units to try to address the, um, uh, some of the topics that have been more prevalent this year.
So there was even an alignment problem with this new test? Not, not only a rigor, but an alignment? Is that a fair characterization?
Uh, I would say that some of the questions appearing on it are, are a lot more rigorous than in years, years past, I would say, the last couple of years in particular.
And even good students might not have been prepared for those, some of those questions. That's what I meant by alignment.
I think that's fair to, I think that's fair to say. I, I think the big thing is, you know, obviously we, we're not going to rest on just like it's the second year back, the kids are better acclimated and, and we, we have some things in place, but we still have more work to do. I think we're probably two years away from getting close to where we were before the pandemic. Um, obviously the, the core math and English classes have, have heard us not running those. So I think trying to continue, we're running a couple. It's not like they're all gone, but we need to get back to kind of where we were with those sections.
Okay. Well, tell Mr. Murray and Ms. Deon, I miss seeing them.
Okay.
Two more, two more questions, April and me.
This one's very quick.
Sure.
Um, so another takeaway that I had from the conference and I just thought of it because the MCAS is done online, right? It's a computer test, all the students are given a test. So one of the things that was mentioned at the conference is that kids are looking at technology completely different now because of how much they were thrown into it being remote and on the panda, and with the pandemic. And again, districts statewide were noticing a correlation between the MCAS scores post-pandemic where kids are looking at technology completely different and possibly checking out while taking the test because they're just so over having to do their work online. Do you think that that's a fair assessment? Whereas I heard, I did hear a lot of that from, it was a lot of focus on like, you know, social, emotional and kind of coming back from those sorts of things. So it was something that I wouldn't have thought of because you come home and they're on their video games, they're watching YouTube with no problem, but when it came to anything academic before, like technology was a novelty and now it was, then it was forced on them and that might have something to do with some of the, the lower scores, do you think?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's definitely, it's, it's a, it's a valid point. Um, you know, where, where right now, technology is infused into the instruction, but they're not on their Chromebooks, the whole sixty minutes in the class. So, I definitely think there's validation for that statement. It was definitely overkill with the standing, sitting behind the screen. And then, you factor in what they're doing at home during that time, where they were all behind a screen, where now, I think it's a little more palatable, because they're not always on the Chromebook when I'm in the classroom observing. They're on the Chromebook for a portion of the class, so there is that kind of reprieve. So, I definitely think there's, there's something to, to that statement.
I have read on a lot of special ed, like, what, oh, sorry. I've read on a lot of special ed blogs and articles and things like that, that one of the accommodations that you can ask for on the MCAS is a paper-based test instead of a computer-based test. And we haven't utilized that a lot, because we didn't know what would be better, and kids are used to technology, and just because I'm not as familiar, they could be, and things like that. But a lot of the, a lot of the research that I'm reading is stating that they're finding that kids really do need that, and that more, more and more schools are recommending for specific kids to use that. I don't know why, I don't know if it's because of the, like, pandemic, I'm not sure what the reason is, but it's just something I've seen come up a lot, is that a lot, there's a lot more push for the paper-based accommodation. So, it's got me thinking.
Just to be consistent and not belabor my point, but, again, for scholarship and student learning, I would just ask again that we as school committee, don't get into the weeds, obviously, and I understand what you're saying, that things filter down all the way through, but it would be nice, I think, or helpful, to see some prioritize specific student measures in the scholarship piece, that's all. Whatever you think is the most important, what are some things you're gonna try to do that you're probably already doing, that you could let us know about in that section of the report?
Fair enough.
Thank you. And again, thank you for all your work, Dr. Shuan, for the strategic plan work, you guys for working on these improvement plans together as a team, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Mister, Mister Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, please.
You mentioned the scholarship and student learning standard a few times. Would you like, I, I don't know if we're gonna vote tonight.
Well, yeah, I was gonna mention the fact that, but Mass General Law states that the school committee is supposed to vote on school improvement plans. We did not have, is that, has the law changed?
No, we're supposed to.
Oh, right. So, I just wanted to mention, I know people are leaving, but we did not have vote on the agenda tonight. That's my fault, so we are not gonna be able to vote tonight. However, in, in light of that, I would ask you, Dr. Deandra, maybe that we might wanna revisit the timeline a little bit on, on this going forward in the future, just because, also my understanding that school councils are supposed to formulate a school improvement plan. And so, I'm not sure what, how much input school councils had on these particular improvement plans. And it might be different from what we've done in the past, but just reading the laws today, that is one of the Mass General Laws, that, and one of the most important functions of a school council. So, in light of COVID learning loss, in light of recent MCAS scores, in light of the fact that we said student learning is our number-one priority, I, I would ask you if we could take a look at that particular goal with a little more specificity, again, and then that could be brought back to us where we can vote on the whole package together, anyway. That you and your team determine the timeline or something like that, but that's just my suggestion.
Specific to the scholarship and student learning?
Yes.
Yes.
Excuse me?
He's just talking specific to the, that standard.
We're gonna vote on the whole plan.
Yeah, but we have to vote on the whole plan.
You were asking also for a change of the timeline.
Well, I said, I said going forward in the future, we might wanna look at a different timeline, depending on.
Is that part of the package?
No.
Look at?
No, 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 I think we have, we are where we are right now. I think that would be something we'd have to discuss for like, following, following year or something, potentially, just because of the school council piece, potentially. But that's something you can discuss as an administrative team going forward. But I think if we could take a look at that, and then we can vote and get it all approved, that would be great. April?
And if we are going to do that going forward, could we maybe have that as our, like, a workshop and as our only agenda item? So that with all of the questions and important questions that people ask, that it's, we're, you know, not here till midnight?
Agreed. Okay, so then, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Mister Chairman, can we have?
Absolutely, yes. So, we, we would ask Dr. Harriet Sullivan to please come forward and give her a presentation. We know you've waited a long time, Dr. Sullivan, if you'd like to come forward. It's our understanding that as part of the doctoral program, that you had to present to the stakeholders some of the findings in your research, so we're glad to accommodate you and let you do that tonight.
That's right, thank you.
And thanks for waiting.
I was told that you would have the presentation on your.
We do, it's part of our packet, yes.
Okay. Thank you, yes, so I recently graduated from Northeastern University with my doctorate in education. And, the, one of the final pieces is to come and present the findings to the stakeholders, and you, in my research, were the stakeholders. So, I'm just gonna bring the presentation up, I'll go, I'll go quickly through it, because I know it's been a long night for everyone. So, I'm just gonna skip through the overview. Action research is a type of research, it's democratic in nature, and the idea is to identify a problem within a community, and speak to the people who are most knowledgeable about that problem, and incorporate them into your research in order to come up with an answer. So, as a health teacher, I considered, you know, spent a lot of time trying to, considering what was, you know, the most pressing issue I felt that I could impact in the school, and, from my position as a health teacher. And I decided that our town is, really has a, a hard time with, with addiction and, and drug issues. That coupled with the fact that, as I'm sure you're well aware, in the last few years, marijuana has become legal for people over the age of twenty-one. So, it seemed to me that if I focused on that topic, it might help prepare our kids for living in a society where, where drugs are so common, not just in our town, of course, they're everywhere. But it seemed like that was an important topic to tackle. So, what I did, there's, and I'm just gonna kind of go through this. My research question was, what I focused on, what, what should middle school students learn to help them delay or avoid drug experimentation? There's a lot of research that shows that when students move into high school, they're exposed to a lot more drugs. It's just more common, it's more prevalent across the country. So, seventh grade being the last grade that they're in the middle school, seemed like the perfect time to provide them with this kind of education, so that when they went to the high school, they are more prepared. So, my research was really focused around what do they need to know to help them be prepared when there's situations where drugs are available to them? So, I, so there's cycles of research and action research. And so, in cycle one, I interviewed staff and students over eighteen at the high school. And they were wonderful, they gave me a lot of insights, and told me what they felt students were struggling with, how drugs affected them. And the young adults gave me their perspectives, too, so it was, you know, two different sides. So, that coupled with an exhaustive literature review, helped me develop the drug education curriculum that I taught last year to the seventh graders. And so, of course, that had everything out of the literature that was shown to be effective. I incorporated nine different, I pinpointed nine different topics that they needed to learn, and I included five different educational theories in that. And a big component of that, which has been a theme tonight, was social, emotional learning. So, I developed this curriculum, and then taught these lessons to the students first term last year, gave them pre- and post-testing. And the findings showed that drug, adolescent drug use is a concern. One thing that was, I suppose, most alarming to me was the fact that the eighteen-year-olds who I interviewed didn't think that marijuana was dangerous at all, they felt it was benign. And another component that I left out previously, I'm sorry, was that, what they say in addiction research is that neurologists say that, under the age of twenty-five, people who experiment with drugs, there's a twenty-five percent chance of addiction. And if you can wait until after the age of eighteen to experiment with drugs, there's a four percent chance of addiction. So, so that was an important factor, too, because the idea is to give kids this education, so that it lessens the chances of addiction. So, what the findings show was that the adolescent drug use is a concern. Happily, the drug education curriculum that I taught the kids was effective. Kids did feel, after they'd received the lessons, that they would, were more comfortable in situations where drugs were involved, and that social, emotional learning is a necessary component of drug education. So, the implications for practice are that drug education should be incorporated into the regular health curriculum at Wareham Middle School, and also employed in other districts with similar demographics. Social, emotional learning should be taught in conjunction, and ideally throughout all the schools, so that students have those skills. So, in addition to the drug education that they would only have in a short period of time in that seventh-grade class, ideally, the social, emotional would continue from elementary all the way up through high school, because those, those two, those two things go into conjunction with one another and support one another. Wareham Public Schools should promote this education as part of a well-rounded education at Wareham Public Schools. I don't know if you're aware, but Massachusetts does not mandate health education. I think the fact that we provide this education here, and that the kids have this curriculum, which has been found to be effective, is a feather in our cap, and so I think that, something that we can feel proud of. I would recommend that follow-up lessons be taught at the high school to reinforce learning and embed the concepts that they're learning in the seventh grade. And, the outcomes of incorporating this type of curriculum are improved academic performance, improved dropout rates, discipline, discipline issues, and addiction rates. So, I hope we didn't speed over too much of that, sorry, it's been a long day.
How many years, how many years did that take you to present in ten minutes? I know you went through a lot of work.
Yes, well, that's the, obviously, that's the, not the elevator pitch, but the short version. But.
April, you have a question?
Any questions?
First, congratulations.
Thank you.
And, second, I could not agree more that starting this kind of education young is super-important. I've always been very open about my whole life, but my son, his father is now fourteen years sober, but my son started off going to meetings at nine years old, and even just sitting in a room while people were talking about their addiction stories and watching people in recovery. He, at eighteen years old, has no desire to experiment, do any of those things. He just, he's home in his room all the time, so, which is great, but I think that it is hugely important that they have that exposure, and that they have the, not the, the sugar-coated, just don't do it, it's bad, kind of exposure. So, I think what you've done in your research is, is fantastic, and we do as a society, not just in Wareham. There is a huge problem, and it is starting younger and younger. I know that, I believe Chris Heron has some really great, you know, talks to high school students or even middle school students about, you know, starting young and the peer pressure and the why. You know, I know one of our district plan reasons was our why, right? So, getting to the root of why kids are doing that, so I think that this is fantastic, and I thank you for all your time and your dedication to this.
Oh, my pleasure. Yes.
Brandon first, and then Jeff?
I was just gonna say, again, congratulations, but, first of all, I was surprised to find out we don't have drug education include, I mean, I remember, I remember Dare when I was a Wareham high school and middle school student, that we had the program, so I assumed that that was at least a component of our education, so thank you for enlightening me that that hasn't been going on, but.
It, it has, I was teaching drug education previously, I've been teaching health for ten years here at the middle school. So, it was being taught, it just, now, the curriculum, you know, the curriculum's based on, you know, what we had, the, the, the resources that were out there, but this one has been created specifically for our town. So, it has been taught in the past. I will say, though, that, that what all the research points to is that the Dare, and, and the curriculum I have, it's, it's harm reduction, really, because what they say is those scared, scared tactics that they use in the Dare programs were not effective and in fact, sometimes counterproductive.
No. What about, now, I see that you're focusing on your drug prevention education, but what about with so many families that have been touched by the opioid crisis? What plan is there in place, or what would you recommend there be in place to help students who are affected by it? I mean, who's, you know, who for them, school is the safest place they are every day?
Well, what came up in my research was, if you can, a universal prevention, public, a universal public health approach is best, in my view, and in what I found in the research. Because what that means is like, you know, if you blanket, if you ideally could blanket the whole country with this type of education, then, you know, most of the population of students, young, young adults, goes to public school. So, you, you can cover, you know, a massive amount of students. The problem is, and in the past, the programs that have been taught have not been effective. So, I think that, you know, people kind of didn't have as much faith in it. So, what I hope with this program is, you know, to bring something in that is effective and is shown to be effective, and because, because I, you know, I really feel it, it's, it's almost cruel to not educate these kids about drugs. They're gonna come across them, I was just reading something in the New York Times today, and it was about how kids really need this type of education, because even if they're buying and thinking they're taking a Percocet pill, you know, as young adults, but there's often, there can be fentanyl in there nowadays, so it's become even a more dangerous situation.
Jeff?
Kudos.
Thank you.
So, two questions. One is, one of your findings was that drug education curriculum is effective. How did you conclude that? What was the data that allowed you to say that?
Sure, I did pre- and post-test with the students, so, ten-question survey, some open-ended questions, asking them about their prior knowledge. And then, the main, the main focus in my research was all of the areas, but, if you were in a situation where somebody offered you drugs, would you feel, you know, do you feel you'd be prepared to, to deal with that situation? And, what hap, when the results showed that after taking the curriculum, the responses that the students provided were they felt much more comfortable, and then they could vocalize what they would say, and how they would do, they would, they could talk about using assertive communication, they could talk about peer pressure. And so, they were much more knowledgeable on the subject, and when I compared the results from the pre-testing to the post-testing, as I said, the amount of students who felt like they were prepared to deal with those situations increased.
How many students were involved in this?
I think about eighty-five.
That's a good number.
Yeah, so that was term one of health last year. So, I just did the survey and the research for my dissertation, but then, of course, all the students have had this education since then. I'm continuing to provide that this year.
So, I'm, I'm always astounded to realize that, you know, over ten thousand people a month are dying of COVID still, and we just seem to take for granted that, oh, well. The opioid, opioid is almost as bad, not quite as bad, but in the middle, to my surprise, is alcohol. Does any of your education include alcohol?
Yeah, alcohol is the number-one abuse drug across the globe, yeah, so that's in there, yeah.
So, that's part of your curriculum?
Yes, yes, it is.
That's outstanding, I'm really glad, glad to hear that.
Yeah, and, and so, of course, we talk about that, because, you know, the kids are surprised to hear that.
I was surprised.
Yeah.
And, but the one thing I was disappointed in, it sounds like the kids do not think of marijuana as a drug.
Yeah, that was really one of the things that stood out to me, that the eighteen-year-olds I interviewed, you know, they said, it's not really a big deal, I know a lot of people who do it, it's legal now. So, really, it really struck, you know, if they think that, and then that coupled with this neuroscience research, like I said, you know, the earlier they started, and I really emphasize that a lot, the ear, you know, what you do as an adult is up to you, if something's legal, that's up to you. But, what you really need to know is that your brain, we, there's lessons on brain development and so on that are part of this. Your brain is still developing until you're twenty-six, and then, so the use of drugs while the brain is still developing just has a huge impact on addiction. And, and we talk a lot about addiction, consequences of addiction, and so on, they don't wanna get addicted. So, you know, yeah, I feel, I feel good that the, that the curriculum, you know, has been impactful.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Dr. Deandra, you're up with gifts? Oh, I'm sorry.
This is pretty easy, it's on the agenda, I'm just not sure if it's there.
No, it's in, it's in with the superintendent's newsletter.
She wants to go home, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we can jump, we can jump to that right now.
We're getting there, Tracy, we're getting there, hang in there. So, first on my report is we have a gift that I'm asking the school committee to accept, hats and gloves from Lois Ladd of Wareham, donating the hats and gloves to the Wareham Middle School Holiday Giving Tree.
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I pose five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please, I ask that, that the school committee approve the bill and payroll warrants that listed in the superintendent's newsletter?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I pose five zero zero, thank you.
Okay, the, Wareham Middle School is looking to establish a jazz band club as a pilot club for the remainder of this school year. The Peace Builders Club is inactive, so we'll use the stipend from that club to fund this Level One, this Level One club.
Questions, concerns?
I feel like I should say something, I've been waiting on this long.
Hi.
Hi.
We wouldn't mind if you yawned.
I have had students asking me to start a jazz band here since before COVID started. The specific students that are persistently asking are now in seventh grade, and they are really excited at the even hope that we can start a club. I have about twenty-four to twenty-five kids right now that are looking to get started with this as soon as we can.
So moved.
Second.
Second, April?
Well, I'm gonna second it, but I just have a comment, so I, quickly, I was in jazz band and jazz choir when I was in school, and I was at a wedding this weekend that had a jazz trio, and out of everyone under seventy, I was the only one that could identify any of the music played because of it. So, it stays with you. So, even though, you know, I think it's great that you have that many kids that are involved, and I honestly hope that you can work closely with the high school band and move those kids, because it's, there's nothing better than being at the football game and having the kids that are still involved in the music program and shifting through. I was in mine from. involved in the music program and shifting through. I was in mine from kindergarten until I graduated. So I think it's great what you do.
Thank you.
So we have a first and a second? Do we have?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll pose 500. Thank you very much. Great idea.
Thank you. And finally, on my report, in order to bring our food service program into compliance with a federal governing body and Department of Education, we need to increase the amount we're charging for our adults meal. Mike and I looked at the formula that we're required to use and we were undercharging. So we need to increase from $4.50 to $5.35. So I ask your approval to bring us into compliance with our adult charges.
Do you have a question?
So he doesn't need the money to balance the food services budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And what is the penalty for non-compliance?
Probably to be compliant. So they, they, right, so they tell you, fix it.
Services cop that comes out?
Yes, they, well, yeah, I mean, they do, they do come in and do a review. They do an audit and they'll say, increase it. So.
This is called inflation. Okay, too bad.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 500. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all I have.
All right. Any public participation? Thank you. Our marathon meeting tour continues on Thursday at 8:30 AM for our all-day budget meeting.
That's correct.
That's called abuse.
I am unable to attend. Just, I have to work.
And we will have an executive session next Thursday, November 17th at 5:45 prior to our 6:30 meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
500, meeting is adjourned.